All right, good evening and welcome to the Wareham School Committee meeting. Today is Thursday, December 17th. Our meeting is remote. This meeting is being recorded. It is not being broadcast live because of the bad weather of today. But because it is a remote meeting, all of our votes tonight will be roll call votes. Before we start the meeting tonight, I would just like to take a moment or let everyone in silence. There are three members of the Wareham Public School community who will be remembering. The first is Lee Wheeler. She's a retired special ed teacher from DeKalis Elementary. Also Bob Pimentel, who's a retired guidance counselor at Wareham High School. And also Tina Coughlin, who was a preschool paraprofessional currently working at DeKalis Elementary, but headed for the past 23 years in Wareham Schools. She was also a staff member of the care program and beyond school time. So if we could have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Again, I noted at the beginning of the meeting, it's a remote meeting. Our meeting was scheduled to be remote even before we got the snowstorm today, mostly due to the amount of presentations tonight. I wanted to make sure that everyone who wanted to be at this meeting could be here. And we're limited in space at the building at the multi-service center. So going forward, we'll just reevaluate as we go. The multi-service center is a town building, which is now closed to the public. So our next meeting is January 7th. So we'll make that decision as time goes on. So first on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here on the meeting if you are here and you wish to speak? If you could put it in the chat so that I will know. Okay, I don't see anyone. I do see April. I see that you're saying that you're having trouble hearing. Is anyone else having trouble? No, I don't think so. I don't think anyone else is having trouble, April. Um, okay. So we'll move on to good news. But before we do that, I just want to, there's so many people on the meeting, and I just want to have a roll call of the school committee to make sure that all five of us are here and can hear. So if you're here, say yes, Mike Flaherty.
Yes, here.
Okay, thanks. I know April's here. Mary Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, and Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll move on to good news. Are there any members of the committee who'd like to share any good news? We'll go around. Kevin, do you have any good news you want to share?
Off the top of my head, no. I guess it was good that we got a school day in today and we don't have to worry about it in June. So, good call.
Anyone else, Mike?
No, not offhand.
Okay. Mary or April?
I just saw on, I know it's not necessarily specific, but I've loved seeing some of our seniors' parents post about college acceptances coming in. So I'd just like to take a minute to congratulate any of the seniors that are getting their acceptances. I know it's a complicated year for them, the last two. So it must be really exciting for them to get that positive news based on everything that they've gone through the last year.
Okay, thanks, April. I don't see Mary on here. So I just had a couple of things I wanted to say at our meeting last time. I did mention earlier that day, there had been a really exciting event at DeKalis where they had some food distribution. And I just wanted to point out that there are things like that going on everywhere at all the schools. And so many community businesses and organizations have teamed up with the schools. And I wouldn't ever want to leave anyone out. I just want to thank everyone at all the schools who are making this happen. It's just a reminder of what a really generous community that we live in. So I just wanted to point that out. I also wanted to thank the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for joining us at our public hearing last week for the budget. Also a Zoom meeting, which I think allowed more people to attend, which was great. So I do appreciate them attending. Last weekend, we had town meeting. We're also, there were a few articles that support the schools that were passed unanimously. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who made that happen, who was at town meeting to vote. It was a really rainy day to have an outdoor meeting. So I appreciate everyone that was there and everyone who supported the schools that day. And also, I just wanted to point out that at the Board of Selectmen meeting this week, they honored our student Keegan Cahill, who had previously been recognized here at our meeting by Dr. Shaverhood. But I just wanted to give him another shout out because the award that he received, which was the Legion of Valor with Bronze Cross for Achievement, was really a tremendous award. And I just wanted to recognize him once again. All right, that's all that I have. Mary, I'm sorry, did I skip over you for good news?
That's okay. The only good news I have is that we're going to have a break soon.
That is good news. Okay, thank you. So next, we have the minutes of our meetings from November 3rd and November 19th. So first, we'll go to the minutes of November 3rd. Does anyone have any questions or changes to be made to those minutes? Okay.
I was placing my hand, just asking, did those come separately?
Mike, I can't see you. They came the next day.
I missed it then, so I'll probably just abstain, but sorry, I missed it.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Staying.
And Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four zero, four zero one. And next, excuse me, there are the minutes of the meeting from November 19th. Same thing, I'll just ask if there are any questions or changes. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, second by Mary. All those, sorry, roll call vote. April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Abstain.
Okay, myself, yes. So four zero one. Thank you. Mike, I just want to say, I don't know if you have your camera off or on, but I can't see you.
So I'm in there twice. One of them has video. The other one, no.
Well, on my screen, I can't see you. So if you want me to recognize you, I guess you'll have to say something. Okay? All right, so next on the agenda is transportation.
Yeah, Joyce, what you need to do is have the people that are not involved with the meeting right now to kill their video. And then that way, it'll reduce the number of people on the screen. And then it'll get it so you can see everybody you need to see at the time. There you go, that's better. Oh, boy, they just jumped right out.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Is that better?
It is. I still don't see Mike, but.
I'm either.
He'll pop up here. Oh, there he is. All right, I got him.
And if you see me kind of looking off camera, it's because I'm looking at the bigger screen, that's why.
Okay. All right, that's good. Yep, I have the whole.
Okay, and as they come on by item on the agenda, then we'll bring them on and other people can back out.
Okay, so I guess I would ask you to bring Marie Ferrera on.
She's there, I think.
I got you, Marie. So earlier this week, Marie reached out and she wanted to just have a little meeting with the school committee, just to bring us up to date on what's going on in transportation. And so we invited her here tonight. So Marie, I will turn it over to you. Oh, you're muted, Marie.
There we go. So one of the reasons that I asked was because a few meetings back on the school committee, a comment was made and it bothered me greatly. And it bothered some drivers. And I found myself also having to clarify things with a couple of parents. I'm not calling anybody out. I don't mean any disrespect at all. And I guess I'm gonna project my question to you, Joyce, where you're the chairman. When the school committee members get concerns or complaints, do the members vet that information before it goes public?
Um, I guess I would say that it would come through me and through the superintendent.
Well, there was a comment made about the buses not being cleaned. And it bothered me greatly, only because it just appeared to me, my perception was that they weren't being cleaned and that we were not doing everything that we needed to do to keep everybody safe. And that's far from the truth. Back in March, when we started in Assisted Food Services, we had two people on a bus and we had to deal with the public. We put into place gloves, masks, wipes. And then I pushed it even further and asked the tables to put a distance between us and the families. August came along and now we were going to be changing and it was going to be a whole new ballgame where we had to transport students. So we formed a committee. And in that committee was Dr. Shaverhood, Scott Tavera, he's our ASME representative out of New Bedford, Jamie Vanessa Iraq, our union president, Stephen Ramsey, our trainer, who is up to date on all federal laws. And I also asked a veteran, 30-year veteran driver, because I didn't want us to miss anything. So as some of you are aware, Desi's report when it came to transportation, some of it was very specific as to seating of students, the capacity. Then it came to windows open and roof hatches. But obviously, it was nice weather and they didn't take into account the weather and everything else. So along with that came cleaning of the buses. So that wasn't specifically clear either. So we had this great idea where the buses would pull up to the school, unload the students, custodians would get on, spray the buses, we'd wait a few minutes, and then we'd be out of there. Well, the more we got closer to school starting, we knew that wasn't a reality. Between the custodians, ours and ours, it just wasn't going to work. So Jamie and myself got on a bus and we sat down and we said, what would the children touch? Because that was Desi's thing, touch area. Well, we realized that the kids touch everything. They touch the front of the seat, the back of the seat, the windows, they touch everything. So being of different ages and half of our driving fleet is 60 or over, including myself, we knew that having to completely clean a bus would probably project different times. So Jamie started in the front, I started in the back on opposite sides. And we decided how long it would take to completely clean the bus, including the cab where the driver sits, because we had to take into account that other people get on our buses, mechanics, for repairs, servicing, or just getting it prepared for bus inspection. So all drivers, the first day of school, were provided masks, gloves, wipes, disinfectant spray, cleaning spray. And as we went along, we, Jamie and I both kept reading everything and we found out, well, we shouldn't be using paper towels. It just spreads it around. It doesn't do anything. So Jamie ordered microfiber cloths. And I can assure the parents and I can assure the school committee that every single day when we've dropped off at a school, the buses pull over and the drivers clean from front to back or back to front, all touch areas of that bus. At the end of the day, we clean them four times a day. At the end of the day, when the bus is parked, the, I call it Ghostbuster Pack, goes on the bus and sprays a mist of disinfectant. And then the bus sits overnight. So we met both of Desi's requirements of cleaning and disinfecting. And I just really, it bothered me that that comment was made. And I'm hoping that at least with our department, if information is brought to the committee, that they vet it first through either Dr. Shaverhood or Jamie or even myself, if you need to. I know most of you, call me, email me. No, don't come over. Don't come over. But I will very gladly tell you what's going on at transportation. Have we had some problems? Yes, but we've worked them out. This is a whole trial and error thing for all of us. So it's something works, something doesn't work, you try something different. Other than that, I think that we're doing pretty good. Our drivers have all been healthy. We've come through it really, really, really well. And I think it's attributed to that our windows are open, our roof vents are open. It is chilly, I'm not going to lie. And us cleaning, constant cleaning. Do you have any questions? Were there other issues brought that you'd like clarification on?
Well, first of all, Marie, I just want to say thank you for coming. And could you tell us your position with the union so that this is why you're here with us?
I am the ASME Local 30 Union Shop steward for the bus drivers.
Okay, thank you. Well, first, I just want to ask also, I know Jamie is on here, if he has anything to add? Did he disappear? There he is.
I'm here.
Do you have anything that you want to add, Jamie?
No, Marie did a good job. Like always, if there's any questions people have, they can always call me. Don't come by the office, obviously, now, but I'm always willing to answer questions and set the facts straight if people need them.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you for being here tonight. You're, I mean, you're all going above and beyond and we really appreciate that.
No problem.
Are there any members of the committee who have questions about what Marie said? Mike?
Hi, Marie.
Hi, Mike.
I actually, I don't have anything to ask about what, well, actually, what meeting was this? How long ago was it?
Um, it was not last week. I believe it was the week before.
Okay, all right. But you just said if you had any questions. I'm just curious. I'm hearing the kids are putting the windows up. Is that true?
Oh, I would hope not, because our drivers would be all over them. We know that the windows have to be down.
Right. Separately, I'm on the Transportation Subcommittee at the Kipkla Collaborative, where I'm the school committee member there. And that's a problem there, but they literally pull over and stop, like they.
Well, I have to tell you, our children have been really good. They're very resilient. I personally have not had one problem at all. The only problem I've had is the bus is very quiet. It's not full of laughter. And I actually had one student say to me, Ms. Ferrera, there's a positive side to the COVID. And I was like, a positive side? And she said, yes, we don't have to hear you sing anymore. So I thought that was kind of humorous. So they still do have a sense of humor. But I personally have not seen any children putting our windows up. And I don't believe that they would. I think they have a full understanding, as well as we do, that it's a safety factor and it's for their safety as well as ours.
Now, Jamie, would you concur? Jamie Andrews, Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, I haven't noticed any kids pulling the windows down. I would definitely notice if.
Putting them up. They're putting, I'm hearing they're putting them up. And that obviously slows down the airflow.
Right, yeah. I haven't honestly seen any of the kids put them up. I've been to the schools during dismissal. I haven't seen any of the kids putting them up. But if they were, I definitely know the drivers would be letting them know that they need to keep them down, especially for their own protection. I know a lot of the kids need to be back in school, because I know they don't want what happened in March, where they didn't get to see their friends for five or six months. I don't think any of the kids want that to happen again.
Anyone else have anything? April?
It's not about cleaning. I think, I think it's amazing what everybody's been able to do and pull off in keeping everything as organized as you can. And like Marie said, this isn't a trial and error and everything is constantly changing, whether it's the regulations coming from the state or just procedurally. And I know that it can't be easy for you guys or for the drivers or for the administration to try to come up with a best practice that works for everyone. My question is, is what we had asked before, and I believe Dr. Shaverhood was going to look into where things had been posted. But it was mentioned before in a couple of meetings about, you know, driver shortages and things like that. And where we had possibly posted job listings, because it was, you know, I had checked, you know, monster.com or Indeed or SchoolSpring, hadn't seen anything. So I just wasn't sure if that's still something you guys are looking for, to make sure that if we do have drivers that go, you know, unfortunately, that may get sick because of, you know, not necessarily from contact with the bus or through the school, but you know, everyone has a life-ish right now side of their job. But you know, their family members could work in the frontline or they could be exposed to the virus. So if we have, you know, do we have substitute drivers? Do we have, you know, a plan in place to have a, to try to find more, more drivers? So that we can help, you know, kind of ease the strain or the stress should it come up?
So right now, April, all our runs are covered. We're, they're covered right at the maximum. We can't really afford any drivers to be out. As far as postings, our own school site has bus drivers postings, Indeed, and SchoolSpring has it posted too. The problem with bus drivers is this is a nationwide shortage. We are not the only district. Everybody around us is looking for drivers. The, what happens is it takes eight months from start to finish to become a school bus driver with your hours of training, passing your different tests, your CDL, your driving test. And I attribute that to, if you need a job, you can't afford to wait eight months to be licensed to be able to get it. We are always trying to recruit drivers and look for drivers, each and every one of us. I was just telling Dr. Shaverhood that I have a couple of friends in Plymouth, and unfortunately, eight of their drivers there have contacted COVID. They don't do the cleaning procedures that we do. And again, I attribute to what we've stepped up to the plate that has saved us greatly. So I don't know what the answer is to recruiting drivers. We've been trying for years to recruit drivers, initiating a pay scale that would bring drivers in at a higher rate than what your existing drivers make. That didn't work. So I don't know, we're all in the same boat across the country. I, people are not banging down the door to become a bus driver. It's very difficult. Well, it's just difficult to keep your license and do your in-service hours. And constantly, if it's not the federal government, it's the state that are enacting new laws for CDL drivers or school bus drivers with their certificate license. So, and the physical alone itself makes it difficult.
Thank you, Marie. That's, that's what we've been being told for a while now, about the nationwide shortage. Anyone else? Kevin or Mary? Mary, you had your hand up.
And I just want to ask about, how's the mask wearing going with the students on the bus? I know that can be a struggle.
Um, I personally have not had any problem at all. I know of only one driver that has had an issue with that, and it's with one of the tiny kids. So we know they're little. It's being addressed. And hopefully, we can get the little one to, you know, be convinced that he has to do the right things. But other than that, there have been no issues. Of course, you know, you have to remind them, they get on the bus, it's hanging off their nose, you know? And you just say, over, cover your face. And they're right there. Of course, this, some of the students, we know, they're children, they forget their masks. We all have boxes on our buses that contain masks, so that if a child comes to the bus and for whatever reason doesn't have it, we provide them with one.
The other question I have is, with the students who have been quarantined, you know, been exposed within the school, how does that work with the bus?
Well, um, I believe there's a whole procedure on that. And because they're quarantined, doesn't mean that we're susceptible to COVID. I believe if the ones that are quarantined start showing symptoms or test positive, then the bus drivers will get notified to quarantine. And that's what's been happening. So I believe we've had two drivers quarantined because of that, maybe three, where somebody tests positive, whether it's a staff member or a student, and they happen to have a connection with the bus, then the drivers quarantined also.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? All right, Marie, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thanks for reaching out.
Thank you. And if ever you guys have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. I have no problem. You all know I'm very opinionated and boisterously out-voiced. So have a Merry Christmas and have a great night.
You too. Please let everyone know that we really appreciate the efforts, you know. You too. Please let everyone know that we really appreciate the efforts, you know.
Thank you. We appreciate.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on on the agenda to the annual strategic and school improvement plan with Dr. Schwam.
Okay. So, good evening. Uh, everyone can hear me okay? Yes?
Yes.
Um, I want to start with um looking at this slide, which is, to me, very poignant for um many reasons. Um, you see who wants change and everybody's raising their hand. And then the next question is who wants to change and everybody's hand goes down, right? So with one small article and sentence, uh, the sentiment is also changed. Um, but I'd like to welcome everyone to the annual strategic and school improvement presentation, a time to celebrate our success, reflect and share our hopes and dreams for the future of our school system. This slide explains the life of school leaders so well. Everyone wants things to change. But the hard part is realizing that all change begins from within. External change is not possible without some internal decisions to be different or better. This is where it becomes so difficult. We are all unique, affected by our life experiences, culture, backgrounds and beliefs. This is where school leadership lies. It is in the space between external change and internal decisions. We try to create a path of change with the least disruption as we carefully consider individuals within the organization. My dissertation was entitled Educators Race to the Top: A Correlational Study Examining the Micro and Macro um elements. Micro being the human emotions connected to change, the macro being the external factors like the evaluation system, the school system and their mandates. Although complicated as a school life, I am not sure I recovered the results I hoped for. However, I did see that change can occur if we are better skilled at understanding the human experience. In order to understand that, we must understand ourselves. And here we go again, that struggle between internal and external forces. This plan addresses those factors as we continue to learn and grow. It is essential to understand the depth and complexity of school life. My hope is that you will try to peek through this lens as you read and listen to our achievements from last year and our plans for this year. Um, the, the slides will go as such. We will get the vision. I will define the principles, the chosen principles from those, the indicators, our results from surveys, and then the schools. We will do some reflection, analysis, creativity to begin again, moving in the direction of transformation. And of course, our vision, which uh has changed because this plan is a working document. Um, the committee last year voted to add in the words appreciated, impactful, joyful, connected, and balanced into uh what was already our vision for the school. And I added in the sentiment of equity, obviously. Um, we are always on a mission to provide equitable services to all of our students. Prior to beginning, I want to thank um Dr. Shaver Hood for her continuous support and steadfast commitment to the faculty, staff and students of the Wareham Public Schools. Without her vision, our growth in curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional development, evaluation, management, operations and professional culture would be less substantial. Her leadership has allowed us to be autonomous, creative and focused on students. Thank you to Ms. Chandler, Ms. Siemens, Ms. Cote and Mr. Palladino for being instrumental in inspiring their faculty and staff to improve the academic, social and emotional well-being of students. I want to thank the assistant principals, Ms. Russo, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Pont, Ms. LaFavor, Ms. Kavicki and Ms. Cannon for actively participating in data collection, analysis, meeting with teachers and student, students, offering their assistance and continuous contributions to the vision. And I'd like to thank the department chairs, Ms. Fillion, Ms. Frame, Ms. Breeze, Ms. LaSorsa, Ms. Tabor, Ms. Erickson, Mr. Murray, Ms. Medina, Ms. Colby, Dr. Genneke and Ms. Dion for establishing relevant relations with our staff, using the evaluation tool as a collaborative process, assuming everyone serving students wants to be exemplary for the purpose of providing an education to our students, second to none. Thank you to all of our staff. Um, they have done amazingly well as they contemplate change, grow, experiment, create and practice their best teachings, support, service delivery and guidance every day. Thank you to the families that have supported their children's learning by logging on, communicating and expressing their understanding through these difficult times. This plan incorporates many stakeholders and without them, this presentation would not be possible. So our principles, overall, we have scholarship, leadership, citizenship and stewardship. These have been our principles for the last five years. Um, we are obviously at the end of our strategic, this plan, WPS 2021 will be over at the end of this uh coming school year. The chosen indicators that we focus on for each are uh for scholarship, student and staff voice, enhancing emotional intelligence, depth and breadth, open-ended and self-directed pedagogy and learning, leadership, establishing environment of student and staff agent, agency and citizenship, focus on students, building trusting, safe and supportive environments. These are all chosen by the leadership team collectively. The definitions are here. I won't read them to you. You have the PowerPoint, but I want, wanted them to be available to you so that you understood the, what we measure it against when we're looking at our success indicators. They're not just there. We, we have different ways in which we measure. And there's more of them um that we focus on. They're all very important. And our surveys. So this is the overall district surveys. Um, I just want to explain the professional staff survey. I, I heard that there may have been some misunderstanding on that. The professional staff survey actually um is for unit A members and a few unit B members. And so it isn't the whole entire staff. The questions are only relevant to teachers and service providers that are in those units. And those are the people that answer those questions. There are approximately 200 of those. Um, you're, over the years, we get a pretty good turnout on the results of those because most people respond and I check in with the principals as we go to make sure that we've heard from everyone. We provide them time to take the survey at a, at a faculty meeting and so forth. So it's, it's really part of what we try to do to get this feedback is really important for us. So the feedback that we do get is relevant because it comes from most of the people that are working within the schools. A new um measure that we received from the Uni- University of Lowell and through our um relationship with MCIA called the School Quality Measure Survey was very interesting. Um, university professors have a tendency to create surveys that are very complicated, um but they're also vetted. As are the professional staff survey questions are also vetted. My dissertation research was on a survey. And so I understand what has to happen in order for a survey to be relevant and statistically significant, um, which I'm very grateful that I've had that experience. This survey was vetted and it's statistically significant. There were 70 questions. I asked for the raw data. The day, it was extremely complicated. And so I quantified every single question for every school so that we could create, and then I connected it to our plan with the question. So I clustered those questions into units of groups. And then I took those groups of questions and I connected them to our plan so that we could actually find a way to use this data more so in the future, but now at least we have a, a, something to look at, right? And I, I added those questions for all of you because it's really the questions that are pertinent in the survey. Right? Because that's what we're really looking at. We're looking at the answer to those questions, not necessarily just the results. So that was a very interesting practice and I think w- we will learn more and more from that um particular measure as we move ahead. So I thought it interesting um when I compared the results from 2016 of our professional staff survey at, and then our current uh 2020. And as you can see, it's um, we've come a long way since the first iteration of this survey. Um, and that's no, that's a collaborative effort from everyone involved. It has, um, the questions have been the same. Like I said, they were vetted, they're not leading. They are what they are. When we first gave it, we were not thrilled about sharing the results of the, of the survey in 2016. But as you can see, um, everyone takes it very seriously and we work toward finding ways in which we can make our schools um a place where people want to be um for, for teachers and for students. There were 70 questions and 160 responses from the School Quality Measure Survey. We had strong scores in scholarship and in leadership. And we still need to work on um student access and supporting social emotional learning, school culture and finding more effective ways for parental involvement. Um, so we learned that just as a, as a, looking more closely at those questions. Um, our schools, we have, as you know, John W. Deekes, the principal there is Ms. Bethany Chandler. That's grades pre-K to two. Minnet Forest is grades three and four. Ms. Joan Siemens is the principal. Wareham Middle School, grades five through seven. Ms. Tracy Cote and Scott, Mr. Scott Palladino, Wareham High School, grades eight through 12. The order of the presentations, we will begin with the Deekes. We will then go to Minnet, Wareham Middle and Wareham High School. Each school provide evidence of their goal attainment in 2019 and 2020. There'll be a review of the data informing new goals and the, and the proposal of new ga- goals and action steps. This presentation is created so that the school committee and the public have some understanding of our process. We use data to inform our plans. Over the last five years, we incorporated this process as a way to demonstrate transparent communication. The strategic and school improvement plans are living documents that change and grow as we change and grow. So I would like to welcome um Mrs. Chandler. I believe Ms. Russo and possibly um Ms. Fillion. If you have any questions beforehand, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone, Mike, go ahead?
Yeah. Uh, when were the surveys done, Dr. Schwam?
They were done in May.
Right, that's right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kevin?
It would be possible to see the specific answers to the, the second survey that you gave?
You want the raw data?
Yeah, would it be possible to eventually look at that?
I'm happy to share that.
Thank you.
No problem.
What, what? Thank you, Dr. Schwam. Uh, many know, many of you know me. I'm Mrs. Chandler, uh, the John W. Deekes School Principal. Along with me tonight is Ms. Sarah Russo. Ms. Sarah, can you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, School Committee. I'm Sarah Russo, Assistant Principal at Deekes Elementary School.
Thank you. Um, before presenting our goals and evidence for last year and this year, I would like to thank the Deekes School Council comprised of Jessica Gallagher, Patty Bazanet, Allison Partridge, Jackie Tricker, uh, Ms. Anne Marie Fillion, our preschool department chair, and Ms. Deanna Semple. I'd like to thank her, our school dean. I also like to think, thank the faculty and staff of Deekes School. And finally, thank you to Dr. Schwam and Dr. Shaver Hood for their amazing leadership, which has helped us succeed in everything we do. 2019, 2020 became a very typical year, uh, we thought. Uh, we were rolling along with our assessments, our, working with our strategic plan um and moving along quite nicely until mid-March of 2020. And then we really shifted gears big time. We readjusted the way we taught immediately. Remote learning, synchronous instruction, asynchronous instruction and Zoom, which was never in our vocabulary, immediately became our vocabulary. The barriers were posed in front of us and every step of the way, we knocked down the barriers and we learned and we grew, not just um as my school at Deekes, but as a district. Immediately, technology was passed out and our students were online and learning. And we learned as we went. Some of it called, we called it crisis teaching from March on in 2020, but I beg to differ. I thought it was creative teaching. I thought it was impactful teaching. And our staff learned more in those months of how to build webpages, how to learn how to do Zoom, how to share documents that we're looking at, all in a matter of not months, not weeks, but days. So when we think about school improvement, this is what we need to think about. How we act on our feet, we work and we roll with it, no matter what. And it's due to being able to build staff capacity. So when we look at our indicators um of student staff voice, one thing about Deekes School that is imperative um in our leadership style is always making sure that our children know what they're learning, our teachers are able to share what they're teaching and um be able to give feedback to the administration, to the students. So we have open-ended discussion to make our lessons the richest they can be. For the first time last year and rolling into this year, we are doing live assessments where data is coming back to us immediately. Our teachers know through, when we were doing NUIA, when we were doing I Ready, um, we're doing all of our other assessments and it comes back immediate. So it gives us feedback. Our students are knowing based on their test results what they can do. Uh, I can ask any student anytime, how many sight words do you know? And they can tell you, oh, Mrs. Chandler, I learned another 10 sight words. So for the first time, what I'm seeing in our district is children know what they can do, they know what they need to learn, and that is very, very exciting. And that's due to our teachers really sharing, being open-minded and our new assessment systems. Okay. Um, let me see where I'm at now. I really get into that. Um, uh, so I, again, our children can tell you what to do. Our staff worked to build capacity by collaborating with one another and sharing the workload. Another phenomenon that happened and it's happening now is our teachers are working better than ever, more collaboratively than ever to understand what it is they're doing and how they can reach their students, whether it's remote or in person and sometimes both. You can go to slide two. Empowering staff and students to make decisions for the good of the order, that's one of my common phrases, is one of the most important elements to creating a growth mindset that allows for opportunities that would not otherwise have been possible. Taking risks by learning new technology, creating web pages, pages, building creative learning experiences. And all of our fantastic fun we have at Deekes is part of our learning landscape last year and continues to be this year. And hopefully in years to come, even in our new school. Okay, next slide. So the data that you um have been given is the professional staff survey, uh, the school quality measure and student data collected from last December and this October. And I just wanted to ask at this time if there's any questions so far about the data and the surveys you've received? Or anything I've shared so far?
Does anyone have any questions? Bethany?
No? Okay.
I'm so sorry, Bethany.
All right. Okay, so into this year, we are in December. A lot of the goals have not changed completely. The only um goals that we've added in addition to is of course our synchronous asynchronous learning, building upon our um playlists, which another vocabulary word, building our online site, continuing to grow in our technological area because this is a newfound experience for our staff and it may be long-lasting. Uh, it may not be short-lived. So continuing to build the capacity of online teaching and learning as well as of course um our live learning that is luckily happening at our school as well. So offering multiple opportunities will continue to be um at the threshold of our, of what we do at Deekes. And that is just a continuation of um what I've added for our um 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay. Well, I can't see all the members of the committee, so I'm going to go around and just say, say your name and if you have questions, um.
Okay. Well, I can't see all the members of the committee, so I'm gonna go around and just say, say your name, and if you have questions, um, Kevin? Uh, Kevin, you're on mute, sorry.
Sorry. Uh, what is some of the, uh, examples of student data that you look at regularly to inform instruction?
Well, we, our teachers look at most of the student work. Um, what we do for our district is we have a lot of writing days. Uh, Ms. Russo, most recently, put together amazing, um, PowerPoint, which brought preschool through grade two, um, writing samples, so we could look at the growth of our children from preschool through grade two. And we did that as a whole school. And it was different than what, we've always had our writing days where we do it collectively as a school. This came from the middle school. The middle school did it years ago. Um, and we brought it down to Deacon's level. So traditionally, we'd get together live, right? And we'd be in our grade levels. But what happened this year was very unique is that, uh, Ms. Russo put together a, a professional, um, sorry, a PowerPoint that went from preschool through grade two, so we could see the growth and look at the children's work, which became really dynamic. So that's one area. We post a lot of work, um, online. We post a lot of work on bulletin boards. The teachers are always looking at each other's work. And that's what we do to assess. We also try to do a lot of writing. We know writing becomes very, very important with students, and we do a lot of journaling, especially as they get up to grade two. But we collect a lot of small data too, like, uh, Mr. Bruce, I'm just continuing thinking, but, um, we do a lot of like running records. We do a lot of, um, letter sounds, letter recognition. So there's just a lot of data out there. And a lot of our online programs collect data all the time as well.
DRAs, they do DRAs as well.
Yep.
Or, you know, more specifically. And then there's the formal collection throughout the year, three times a year.
Anything you want to add, Ms. Russo, to that?
Um, just the high-frequency words. So, um, you know, initially with, with K, um, they begin with high-frequency words. Um, there's a basic twenty, and then they build from there. Um, when they go to first grade, um, they work on three hundred words. And then once they have that, then they actually move on to spelling. So this is tracked by each teacher with each student, and then they work one-on-one when they do this. And then, of course, with second grade, then they've moved on. They, they're off to writing.
Thank you.
Um, April, do you have any questions for Bethany? I see April, but I cannot hear her. So we'll move on. Mary?
No, all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes. Ms. Chandler, I just wanted to focus on your, uh, your surveys here, and it's really nothing short of outstanding. Um, it's amazing. It's, uh, either you held steady or increased significantly. Um, a couple of areas were exceptional, where you jumped, you, you jumped whole color codes. Um, number fifteen, for example, uh, the leadership team can talk knowledgeably with me about the unit I'm teaching. Uh, two thousand nineteen, it was seventy-eight. Uh, twenty-twenty, it looks like it's blue, but it looks like it says ninety. It's just the contrast is hard for my printer, I guess. But, but how, why would you attribute to such a great increase there?
I, I just think that, um, Ms. Russo and I, and Ms. Philian, we work hard to walk through, do a lot of walkthroughs. Uh, every day, we're always walked through each of the grade levels. Um, I think that it's just a lot of conversations with teachers every day, looking up, looking around, and asking openly, you know, what it is they're working on. Um, yeah, I just think it's open communication. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you. And then number eighteen as well, that, that jumped from seventy-eight to ninety-six. And it says, uh, teachers and leadership team work together to ensure that instructional units are continuously improved to support student learning. How did you, how did you do so well there?
I just think, again, it's, again, it's collaboration, it's working together, it's, um, checking, teaching what, looking at what we do and making it better. Um, I think this is, that, that's part of just the staff working together and thinking about how they do business every day.
Yeah. And so, and so back when we used to be able to tour the building, I mean, that's the sense I got there, that you got, you guys really clicked. Um, but it, it's just amazing that the, the, the last, you know, twenty-twenty was exceptional. It's, it's, it's great. Thank you. Uh, it looks like you've got quite a, quite a crew there.
Yes, I'm, we're very proud. It's, uh, it's a joy to work at Deacon's every day.
Thank you. I'll say cheers.
Thanks, Mike. April, I see you now. Did you have something? I can't hear you. No.
It doesn't come in, but I can't hear.
Could you type it in, April?
Yeah.
That's, and, um, so what, uh, Ms. Rossi wrote was, I see a lot of parents worried about the long-term effects of the remote learning. Do you anticipate a slide next year? We haven't seen too much of a slide yet. I don't know if it, we will for the long term. I do know, and I can attribute to the families, and I want to say thank you to the families out there. Um, families are working tremendously hard, my remote, when they're remote, um, to try to keep up with our strong curriculum and all that we put in our playlist and all that we do each day. So I do know the families are working tremendously hard to practice and do what needs to be done, so our children remain at grade level or above. Will there be a slide? Possibly. But we're trying very, very desperately to reach all students. I have an excellent, um, support staff who reach out to children who, uh, may not have gotten on that day to make sure if there's any way we can support, um, our students who may be struggling, our families who may be struggling. Um, our technology's been wonderful. Um, thanks, Dr. Shaverhood. We have a technology specialist in our building who has, um, really helped to navigate any troubles that are happening with connections. Our teachers do a beautiful job of just making work every week. If you could drive by Deacon's, you would see our tubs, um, which were used for snacks, thanks, uh, food service gave them to us. And then we're using them to pass out and distribute packets and materials. Every week, our teachers are, are working tirelessly to get out what needs to be get out for the curriculum. Um, so I'm hopeful, and we're watching.
Um, that was actually, um, a quote, well, not a question that I have, but just an observation. So thank you for giving us, um, the reports that show that you haven't seen it yet. I mean, which is amazing. Um, it's always great to see the, um, data, you know, from one year to the next, to compare the same kids from last year to where they were this year, at the beginning of the year. Um, so thank you for supplying that.
You're welcome.
I do have a question about the, the effort report card that you developed.
Oh, yes. So that was kind of fascinating. Um, because we were working from March on and we weren't grading at the time, because Desi told us we weren't to grade and that, we said, well, we've got to communicate something very important to our families. We've got to indicate how our children are doing still. So we built a very qualitative report card in the spring, together, collaborated, uh, the staff, to build, um, an effort report card to show, uh, our families and communicate to our families of the, uh, level of effort that was put forth in the spring, along with, um, some nice commentary to share with families. We didn't have comments on the report, the report card in the past few years. We brought it back on, and then in this fall, we, we left the comments on, because I heard a lot of feedback from families that they enjoyed hearing personal, um, comments on the report cards once again.
I'm sure they did. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, anything to add?
Just, just I had a question about the, uh, the number, the number of respondents. It says forty-nine?
Yes, that's the number of, um, professional staff I, I had, maybe missing, um, two from last year.
So are those teachers mostly or only?
Yes.
All right. And, um, just, just when I compared it with Minnet, I'm really surprised that Minnet is twenty-six. Is that?
Minnet has two grades, I have four, so. Might be double.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just wondering if it included the Olympians or something. Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for the next? Okay, we are. Thank you very much, Bethany and Sarah.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. We appreciate it.
So, Joan? You're muted.
I hit the button that said I'm mute. That's weird. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank Mrs. Murphy, who is here on a Zoom, um, this evening. The school council members that work with me, um, you know, back in the spring, when we had to go to Zoom meetings, to what we're doing now at virtual meetings. Uh, the department chairs that I share with in middle school, I appreciate their leadership and their help, um, as we move forward. Um, I appreciate the leadership from Dr. Shaverhood, you know, for some of you school community members that have been here. Um, in the past, we would present these plans individually, and there was no cohesiveness. And, um, Dr. Shaverhood always wanted us to have unity, and I feel that we have that now. Um, and I appreciate Dr. Schwam, who takes the time to put this presentation together, put the reports together, um, keeps all of us on our toes to make sure we meet all deadlines. So through their vision, you know, we have a really solid plan, and it's one that I'm proud of, and I know everyone is. Um, I want to thank my staff who, and not only just my staff, all the staff in the Wareham Public Schools, who have been working tirelessly since March thirteenth. That was the day that we closed schools, and life changed. Um, as Mrs. Chandler said, they had days to prepare, and they really stepped up to the plate and, um, have been working really hard. So as we go through, um, you know, hopefully, the pandemic is something that will be over with soon. Um, you know, Dr. Shaverhood has also been wonderful as far as making sure we have everything we need. She is a phone call away, no matter what time or day it is, you know, she always answers that phone and if we have questions. So I appreciate all of that. Uh, so if you want to go into the slides, because I can't see them yet.
You can't? All right, let me start again, sorry. I can't see you guys when I do this. Keeps clicking me out. So hold on, I'm sorry.
Here we go. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I leave it like that, do you think? Or should I put it all the way?
That's fine, because we can see the main one.
All right.
So just going over, um, the goals that we had from last year. Obviously, we never had a chance to fully complete the goals since we had to shut down school. Uh, we still did work on them. Some of them we had to change, some had to be kind of adapted, and some we just couldn't do it at all because of the pandemic, social distancing, and so forth. Uh, but we did work hard from September all the way through March, and then continued on in a different venue, so to speak. So for student, staff, and voice, um, we really gave a lot of staff voice with the closing of the school. Um, setting up Google Classrooms for the first time, having them use that as their teaching platform, going live, you know, with Zoom meetings, getting to know what Zoom even was and, and how you use it. Um, so that was all amazing. The staff also have helped each other out. So if somebody was able to do something technologically wise, they shared that with their colleagues. Um, they worked as teams. So I think that was really great. And through staff voice, we found that we changed up the teacher teams in order to allow them to teach to a smaller set of kids. And that's one thing that I'm proud of, the teachers at Minnet, is they're willing to take risks. And I, I encourage that. And through those risks, we evaluate, did it work, did it not work? And we kind of adapt. So two years ago, we had, um, all eight teachers on a team. They were sharing students with our P-one to P-four groups, and it really was too much. So we narrowed that down last year through the feedback from the teachers, and we had two groups of four. And that was more manageable, especially for report cards, um, as I'm sure you can imagine. One of the things that I am extremely proud of is the results that we had last year on our professional staff survey. And I wanted to take some of those questions and relate it to the various goals that we had and the objectives here. So you'll see some of the percentages, um, that increased dramatically. And that was a major focus that the leadership team at Minnet took on, um, Mr. Filippo, Mrs. Murphy, and myself. We really worked with the staff, um, a lot of discussions, collaboration, um, just listening to what they had to say. And we made a lot of progress, as you can see, um, with the chat that you have in, in your report. So we're proud of that. Um, open and self-directed, um, as Mrs. Chandler said, not only did we make a lot of changes, but we also had to change our report card to reflect, um, new standards that we were doing. Um, we kind of prioritized them. We looked at having pass incomplete as grades instead of the, the typical standards that we did. So that was all new. Um, and they worked as a team. They came up with what they felt would give the parents the information that they needed. So we were, um, happy that that was able to get completed. Um, I appreciate the, the top department chairs who facilitate a lot of our content meetings as well. And then giving time to the staff to collaborate with all these important decisions that had to be made. For, um, enhancing our emotional intelligence, we had the, the ruler training. We were rolling that out. We were on a good groove. Um, we were just starting to get to the mood meter at Minnet, uh, when we, the school was closed down. So we were able to do the school charter. Um, you see a picture of it there, um, on the screen. And we even took a picture of that tree, and we had T-shirts made. So we were really proud of our charter, and we wear it. Um, so we still have those shirts that we do. So the mood meter was one of those items, so we had to push off until the next school year, which is the, the current one that we're working at. We do a lot of things to build the culture at Minnet, uh, yoga activities, knitting with Chrissy, Bagel Fridays, Tech with Terry, um, recognizing the students through PBIS, the, the leaves that they earned. We had student ambassadors that unfortunately we couldn't do this year because of the pandemic. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that back when we're in our new school. Um, so we do a lot of recognition and rewarding not only students, but our staff as well. Uh, next slide. Establishing the agency, environment of agency. Um, one of the things that really helped with this was the collaboration time, which is Tuesdays. So Tuesday is our late day at Minnet. Uh, we do a staff meeting, there's content meetings, data meetings. And then teachers also have a Tuesday that they can use for grade level meetings. And that gives them a chunk of time that they can help plan and, and work throughout the school year. Um, and focus on students. Again, sharing out the effective teaching strategies with colleagues has really, uh, helped. We've taken the information we've learned through our P-one through P-four literacy groups. We've shared that with our power professionals, and they've been, um, really important in developing the interventions for our students. So those were some of the, um, evidence and indicators that we had from last year. Um, Minnet also did the, the staff survey, as I mentioned. Um, we, we've been looking at our data from the fall of last year to where we are now. So we looked at our, um, current third graders as they came into us from Deacon's. And then we looked from the third to the fourth grade, uh, as we move forward. So the next slide are the new goals that we have. And I say new, but some of them are really just enhanced and expanded on. We didn't feel that we wanted to create a lot of new ones, um, because of the fact that we weren't able to complete some of them at the end. So we are continuing. weren't able to complete some of them at the end, so we are continuing with adding some new action plans, action steps. So for student, staff and voice. All the teachers had the training through modern teacher, so we've developed the playlists. We've developed the learning plans and the various units. You know, new vocabulary that we have, remote learning and hybrid learning. We're providing students choices in those learning plans to help with their learning. And again, the teachers have been wonderful about working together. Open and self-directed. One of the, I guess, positives we can say about the Zoom meetings is we just had parent conferences for mine at Forest and the teachers had the most participation by parents than they've ever had. So going forward into maybe next year, they want to have that as an option. So giving parents the choice of coming in to see them in person, but perhaps having some Zoom meetings. So that was one of the positives that came from back in the beginning of December when we had conferences. We're continuing our emotional intelligence, especially this year, it's so important with the ruler training that we had. I also heard that there was a little visitor that went through mine it on Wednesday and that the teachers may come into a surprise when they walk into their classroom tomorrow with a nice positive phrase written on the glass on their classroom door with some new liquid chalk markers that perhaps the principal received, so. That'll be nice to spread some more positive culture, especially in these very difficult times. Next slide. Establishing an environment of agency. As I was talking to the staff this week and talking about morning meeting and making sure we are continuing with a lot of the routines that we've established and that we've had some success with. I reminded them to make sure that they were doing the the minute pledge and the pledge of allegiance. And the staff said, oh, you, we have you doing that every morning, because that's something I used to do over the intercom and I I miss doing that because there's so many Zoom meetings going on at different times. And I had developed a landing page. And if you ever have gone to that particular page, you'll see there's a phone on the desk of the principal. And if you press the phone, you get a message. If you press the flag, you have my voice doing the pledge of allegiance. We have a poster on that page with the minute pledge and I'm reading out the minute pledge. So that was nice to hear the staff incorporating all that into their daily and their morning plans, so I appreciate that. And then also, as I said, they not only share the technology they're using, but we've developed a lot of videos to help not only the teachers to learn new things, but also for parents to learn new things, especially how to use Google Classroom and such. And a lot of the tech with Terry classes that Mr. Filippo has shared with them and and with students. She's done through Screencastify, Loom and a few others, so. There's been a lot of great things that we have learned that I'm not sure if we would have had as much focus had it not been for the pandemic. And finally, focusing on students. We have to learn a different way. We have teachers that are teaching fully remotely. So they're working with their students on Zoom and now they can use breakout rooms and they can have students in a small group that either they're working with or we've assigned paraprofessionals to work with them. So we're trying to create that live classroom atmosphere into a breakout room on Zoom or Google Beat, some of them use that as well. So it's been a great year so far. I'm glad vacation's around the corner because everybody needs a break just to kind of re-energize, recharge, you know, the teachers need it, the kids need it. And one of the decisions we've made is not to have Chromebooks used during vacation, because I really want the kids to be able to just kind of decompose and relax, so. That is the minute presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joan. I'll just go around the committee like I did last time. Kevin?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick questions. You mentioned ruler training several times and I've read it throughout several of the schools. What's the gist of ruler training?
So ruler training was done through Yale University. This was something that many of the schools had a team that went to this particular training and this focused on the emotional intelligence. So really tapping into the feelings, how we want to feel. We started that with our staff and that's how they presented it to us. As you first out with your staff and you take the whole year to do that and then you would roll it out to the students. So we're still trying to play catch up a little bit with finishing the portions that we wanted to do with the staff. But it's really tapping into the emotional intelligence and making, how do you want to feel and making that chatter and really using that throughout your year.
Thank you. And what's an example of something that happens on Innovative Wednesdays?
So the teachers would do a lot of projects. It used to be Innovative Fridays, but we had to switch it because of the schedule that we have now. So Wednesdays, they can do a lot of project-based lessons with their students, so that's what they use for that.
Thank you.
Mike?
Can you hear me?
I can.
So, Ms. Siemens. So you said you were extremely proud of your surveys and you have every right to be. It's just wow, just wow all around.
Thank you.
Not just, and not just improving, that's just improving leaps and bounds, really. Amazing. So I'll just pick out a few here that really jumped out. Like number eleven, number eleven, you were red for all years and then you just jumped up to blue all of a sudden for last year and it's when I received training, the leadership team checks to ensure that their training made a difference and led to the intended outcomes. How would you, how, what do you think contributed that success?
I'm just pulling that up here. I think it was really touching base with the teachers not on the training. Especially when we had the training back in January with Polly back. The teachers absolutely loved that PD from her. And we wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to use some of those strategies, so at our staff meetings we would have that as one of our agenda items. So we really wanted to focus on the PD that they were receiving and making sure we kept it alive and kept it carried through with their teaching. So that was like one example that we did. We've obviously been doing that a whole lot this year with modern teacher and the playlists and everything.
And eighteen. Teachers and leadership team work together to ensure that instructional units are continuously improved to support student learning. You went from a seventy-two, which was yellow, to a blue and it looks like it's a
Ninety-two.
Yeah, ninety-two.
Yeah, this was a big focus for us because we want to make sure our students have everything that they need, the tools that they need to learn. And we wanted to make sure the teachers have the tools that they need to learn. So we were training a lot of our paraprofessionals to work in those intervention groups. So they're doing a lot of the work with them on the, like the P ones or the P four, the P one with the students that were at risk. And that was practicing and doing like the lazy eight. Crossing the midbrain, different activities like that, all the way up to the students that needed to be challenged. And we had students reading high-level chapter books and doing various projects that way. So for that particular question, that was working with the staff and giving them kind of the the power to say, what do you need to do? What do you want to try to do? Again, taking those risks as well, and we were seeing some great success, you know, in our scores right through up until like, you know, the pandemic hit, but we were proud of everything that we were doing.
Yeah, you should be. And lastly, number fourteen, in this school, innovative teaching practices are encouraged. What made a difference there?
I think, you know, it's always hard when they want to try something new and they don't know. They want to take that risk, but I had to make sure to let them know it was okay to take the risk and if it didn't work, it didn't work. So as I mentioned earlier, two years ago, when, you know, we came to the middle school, we knew we were doing these, the literacy groups. We knew we wanted to break the kids out into various groups instead of one teacher having the kids all day long. They had to really get out of their comfort zone to release their homeroom students to other staff members. And they did that. And the kids went to eight various teachers. And through that process, we found, as I said earlier, it was too much, so we kind of revised that. So it's working with them, giving them some creativity in their teaching and letting them know that it was okay to do that because we want to change things up every year, but we want to keep keep ourselves fresh and new and and see what we can do for our kids.
Great, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
April?
In the chat, it's always great to see improved survey results, so similar question to what I asked Mrs. Chandler. Have you heard feedback from parents concerned for the long-term effects of the new ways of learning? Or have you, or have you heard more positives than not? So we had a lot of students that started out remote and after term one, they just switched to hybrid, so they started to come in. Some of the families were finding it was very difficult to do remote learning at home. So we had a lot that switched in. We had a few that switched out from hybrid to remote, but that was because of the pandemic and the numbers that were going up, basically. The difficulties that we're seeing is trying to connect with the families who may be struggling. If we have absences for kids or maybe they're not getting on every day. That's something as a staff we work with. We call parents, we email parents. The teachers are reaching out, the school social workers are reaching out. So I haven't heard anything in particular about the slide that you have mentioned with Mrs. Chandler. It's just, they want, they want the kids back in school five days a week and, you know, obviously, that's our goal. We would love to have them back when we can. It's just not safe and practical to do that right now, but that's always something on our minds, you know, with what we're doing now. And the effects of not being together with their classmates, you know, we have two different cohorts of hybrid. So I can't wait for the day when we're all back together.
Thank you. Mary?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Joan, I was glad to hear you talk about parent conferences and because I had talked to some parents, I guess, of older children who said, oh, I don't need to go to the parent conference because I see the class online now and I, you know, I see more than I saw before, so I don't need to go. So I'm really happy to hear that that's not the case everywhere.
Right.
You had a good turnout. All my other questions, I think, were mostly asked except for one. So the, again, the the data that was shared, you know, between the spring and then the fall, between the two grades. So I'm sure that every year when the kids come back, there's some type of adjustments that need to be made because they change. So did you see more of that this year and how hard was it to make adjustments?
So as far as the adjustments, when we looked at like at the fast data, because that was the first set of data that we had. It depended on the grade level, it depended on the content area. Like when you look at the math from grade two to three, we were happy that the numbers in the red went down a little bit. And then we were happy with maintaining those green and the blue bands as well, you know, having. You know, when you can get sick over sixty percent, you know, to start with, especially with the students who've been out of school for so long. That was great. And then grade three into four as well. So there was a little bit of regression when you looked at the math. But that's something that the teachers are working with now with the kids. The ELA, you know, ended up going up, so. It, you know, with the department chairs, with our content meetings, this is just something that they're talking about all the time.
Okay, I didn't take this and look at it from last year, so maybe this is similar to what it is every year and, you know, it's just what you're used to doing every year.
Yeah, I just
I'm pleased.
Oh, so sorry.
Joan, I just wanted to add something about the data. We collected it, but it was, it's not really, you know, it wasn't a full year, first of all, so we that in December of last year and compared it to September of the next grade of this year. And so we knew, you know, we're only going to get so much information, right? Because we don't have really the full picture. But what we thought was at least it was a starting point to look at the possibility of regression. Where do, where do we need to fill the holes? Like what can we do right in the meantime? And also, you know, the testing, some of it was done at home, some of it was done at school. So, you know, that's a little bit dicey. I guess it's not as pure as we would have had it if it was like it was always the same. So what we, but we thought it would be really good to at least take a look and then Robin Murphy does a phenomenal job of digging into that data. Like she goes and dives in and digs into every single student under her watch. She makes sure where, she knows where they are, what they know, what they need, who can get it to them, what she can do. She, she does interventions herself, she's pulling kids. There's just this constant sort of level of a depth of understanding that makes you feel really great about what's going on over there, right? Like you just have this knowledge because she is so invested in making sure that those kids are getting what they need and I don't want that to go unnoticed.
Thank you, Dr. Schwam. I appreciate that.
Well, it's true. So I just wanted to, you know, say that we know, at least we have an idea of where they are, but she knows exactly. Right? We see kind of the big picture. But we want to know that that people who are invested with those kids know what Robin Murphy knows about those kids, right? Because it really helps them a tremendous amount.
You know, and to your point, Dr. Schwam, we did do some fast testing via Zoom, you know, and Robin was doing that with many of the students and I know Mr. Filippo did a few students as well. And it was interesting because, you know, the to get their full attention in order to do the assessment was difficult at first, you know, once they got into the swing of it, it was good. But, you know, you have kids bouncing in their chairs and being distracted by what's happening behind them and but we still got some great results, so.
It was an eye-opening experience to go into people's homes via Zoom and listen to them read three passages for me and in between each one, hear about everything that's going on and it was kind of nice. I got to know kids that I haven't met personally and it was just like a bonding experience, but totally different, but it was a new way. It's a new way.
Yeah. Well, I certainly didn't mean that in a negative way.
No, we didn't take it that way.
No, not at all.
At all. I just think we, you know, we're looking at things, obviously, we have to be open about what we're looking at and how and then where we're going to go from here and I just needed to commend. Commend it really, more importantly than anything.
Okay. Well, thank you, unless anyone has any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the middle school.
All right. Evening, everyone. I can you hear me? I hope so. If you can't hear me, let me know because I will turn off my video. I have with me tonight my administrative team. So Sandy Pont is here, Assistant Principal, Dan LaFavor, Assistant Principal. Lisa Breeze is a department chair for ELA. Andrea Erickson is a department chair for Unified Arts. Catherine Frain, a department chair for Special Education. Bonnie LaSorcer, a department chair for Math. And Sue Taber, Department Chair for Science and Social Studies. I also have here tonight Tom Warden, who is one of my school council members. And I appreciate everyone for attending. Please know that what you see here is a culmination of a tremendous amount of work and collaboration. Trust and support are at the heart of everything we do. I feel trusted and supported by central administration stemming from Dr. Shaverhood, Dr. Schwam, Ms. Fay and our newly and our newly appointed Business Manager. My admin team hopefully feels trusted and supported by me and my staff feels that from our admin team. Then that trust and support is carried down to our students and our families. It is through that trust and support that we can share a vision and provide the best educational experience for our students. This is no easy task. I am proud of my team and my staff. They have risen to every single challenge. I have the utmost respect and adoration for their professionalism and commitment to our students. Especially given what has taken place over the last few months. Here tonight is my admin team, my department chairs and my APs. I also would like to thank all of my School Council members. They guide me and share our vision. Our goals from last year centered on staff and student support and culture building. Student and staff voice were at the forefront of everything we tried to implement. Staff were provided choices on unit development and collaborated collaboratively designed lessons that were not only inquiry-based, but were also centered, student-centered, differentiated and engaging, and were globally minded. Our second goal was focused on empowering our staff and students. This involved intentionally teaching a respectful, responsible, thoughtful culture at Wareham Middle School. With this, we incorporated our PBIS skills, strategies and initiatives. We created classes that were data-driven and student-centered. Classes included social responsibility, reading classes for our risk students, core classes for math and ELA, and accelerated classes for math and advanced ELA classes. Another one of our goals focused on staff and students building twenty-first century skills. I'm on the next slide, Andrea. Again, this provided a focus on individual student needs as well as their strengths. We have such a talented group of students each year. Not only do they excel academically, but they excel in the arts with theater, studio art and music. Lastly, we focused on the emotional intelligence of our staff as well as students. We continue to create an environment of belonging where, again, staff feel safe, valued, supported and competent. Our ruler training was very useful in this process, ultimately making strong connections between staff and students that goes beyond the academic classroom. In leads to a trusting relationship again in support of the relationship for all our students. Our data. We again performed our professional staff survey. We saw an increase in areas that we were concerned with from last year. Our data indicates that we are building a culture of trust with a shared vision centered around our students, their needs and the growth that they, we expect from them. At Wareham Middle School, we have provided teach, teacher-centered benchmarks for ELA, math and science. This year, we included social studies in those benchmarks. We have also provided NUI assessments. Last year, we did NUI in October and in December. The data we glean from these assessments inform our instruction, provide a collaborative discussion with our staff, support interventions, provide um, the collaboration that we need so that we can see growth within our students. And also guide us in in what we need to provide this year, next year, and in in the schedule that will really support that growth that we need to see. In addition to this data, we collect discipline data and attendance data monthly. Last year, we saw that attendance data indicated that in eighteen nineteen um, we saw a great improvement with a steady improvement that was continuing into nineteen twenty school year. In attendance, I'm sorry, in a debt um discipline data, um, we saw a decrease in suspensions last year. Um, it's a significant decrease from two thousand seventeen eighteen to two thousand eighteen nineteen with about the same results for nineteen twenty. Um, we continue to collect this data this year. Um, we are concerned about our attendance data, especially with our remote students. That has been a struggle and uh we're working through some of those issues. Our goals for our current year, um, we've basically decided as a team to keep them the same. We've added some um evidence and indicators and objectives that solely um work for remote learning. And so you'll see some of those um indicators and we'll discuss our evidence about that for next year. Um, since remote has really become a new um world for us. I do have, like I said, all my department chairs here. They're willing to speak on any data that you have questions on or anything else that we can answer.
Thank you. Um, we'll just go around and see, um, April, I'll start with you this time. Okay, it's here. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Tracy, can you see her chat?
Uh, I don't know. Um, is this to me? Is it the same, the same one?
No. No, right here. It says, I know personally motivating my high school students if I aren't getting things in on time. Are you seeing a similar struggle with students when not in-person class?
Yes, we're seeing, um, as Mrs. Seaman said, we had a huge influx of students that um the parents wanted them to be um in person, so hybrid. Um, those students have started for term two, um, and we see a great improvement with them. Um, we have some remote students who are doing wonderfully. Uh, we have about, I don't know, probably about five percent of our population that we're extremely concerned about. Um, we're filing some CRAs in court. We're just not getting a response from some of the families. Um, they're not attending our online classes. Most of these are remote students, some are hybrid students, and they're just not coming in the days that they need to come in. So it is um a struggle. I find that the older students don't really love Zooms. Um, but if they're fully remote, we really need to rely on Zooms for in-person learning. Our teachers are, have been very creative in getting students to come to their Zooms. So we have seen an increase from term one to term two for students who are um coming to Zoom. So we're happy about that. Our admin staff, our APs, our counselors have been calling home um, and really trying to get parents on board. We also, I have to say kudos to our CARE program that Jane Fandula runs. I'm not sure if Jane's here. Um, but they are providing academic support to our um to our students after school hours. And um we've really worked hard with our counselors um to get families on board with this. And we have been seeing um some re- recent um improvements with certain students that were at risk. So we're trying every trick that we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mike?
Okay, so you had, you had a great year in two thousand nineteen. So you had pretty tough act to follow. And you did it. You 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 did even better. It's just great. I'm just, I'm really happy going through all of these. Just you're doing such a great job there at that school.
Thank you, Mike.
I don't know what more I can say. If you, you and your team are, everybody, everybody is doing great. And I, I love it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's pretty obvious to me that the middle school has um improved its culture and the discipline data supports that. I think that's due to the leadership team that's here tonight and the support that they give to teachers and the the raised expectations that you have for all students for behavior and also for increasing academic rigor, I think is important. But I just wanted to thank you all for that. I think the perception is going certainly in the, in the right direction at the, at the middle school. Um, and you'd mentioned in one of your action steps that you wanted to provide opportunities for staff to showcase model lessons, which I think is a, is a great idea. It's been my experience that sometimes staff is hesitant to kind of step up and and show that they have a model lesson. How do you encourage that? And I guess my question is, when and where is that going to happen?
Can, can one of my department chairs answer that, please?
Sorry, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Lisa, thank you.
Um, so in the English department, we've been sharing model lessons for, um, I want to say at least three years now. We make it the first um ten fifteen minutes of our curriculum meetings every month. Um, teachers share lessons, they share strategies. Right now, we're sharing um new tech tools that we're finding um in ways to engage kids and ways to have kids interact with um texts virtually, which is kind of hard when we're used to holding books in our hands. Um, so that's how we do it in my department.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Mary? Oh, sorry. I just wanted to add to that. They don't often talk about themselves in a very good way, right? So I just want to brag a little bit if I might, but uh the middle school and the high school were instrumental in creating performance-based measures. And and talk about model lessons, right? These, these are really, they're standards-based and they are so creative and so full of choice and voice. And um they've been noted as um excellent from out external assessment, right? So IB came in and looked at them and brought, and said, wow, these are fantastic. And then we sent them to MCIEA, which is the other consortium, and uh they love them. And so they, they've been instrumental in just making learning come alive for, for kids in this development of their practices and their units. So I just didn't want that to be lost.
And I have to say, one of the good things um since COVID has uh begun is that the amount of collaboration that staff um have done on their own um at night texting each other late hours of the night saying, hey, Tracy, we have this idea. Hey, we're going to do this. I mean, it, it's just, um, it, it's amazing. Um, and really sharing ideas, trying new things. Um, someone will try NearPod and say, oh, my God, I can do this with it. Come see. And so that has, um, I, I, we've always had a collaborative staff, but I think that has created um a much better unity for us and definitely sharing model lessons with synchronous learning. Oh, I'm doing it this way. How are you doing it? And um that's opened up some new doors for us.
Um, Mary?
I get, I guess the, most of my questions have been answered, but I guess one of the questions I have is with the kids that aren't engaging. And maybe I missed it, but um uh, do, is someone sent out to the house to make sure they're, they're okay?
Yes, Mary, we um, we actually, we can definitely say, um, Danny, Sandy and I have actually spoken to every single child. Um, and so, or a teacher has seen them or spoken to them. However, when I get to, you know, five days in a row that um attendance is an issue or there's been a couple of weeks and we still haven't heard from anyone. Um, Officer Baptiste has been wonderful. Um, and he has gone to the houses and he'll say, hey, call the school today. Typically, the parents do. Um, we, our APs are pretty awesome about um hunting down and tracking down families to call. So um we definitely have had contact with all of our students. We're just not tremendously happy with all of um their attendance right now. And like I said, we are following up with that. Um, we have assigned some Paris to specific students and um we are filing CRAs in, in court, so.
Okay, good, because I know that's been an issue where I am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess I would just echo what Kevin and Mike had said about, you know, all the, the great things. Um, collaboration is definitely a, a theme tonight, which is great through, throughout all the schools. It's a bright spot when there aren't a lot of bright spots. So it's great. It's great to hear that. Um, there is one under, under your actions and emotional intelligence. There was a sentence that really just struck me that says, create an environment of belonging where everyone feels safe, valued and confident. I mean, that pretty much just sums it up right there. Um, so thank
For staff and our students, so.
Mm-hmm. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Can you guys still see the PowerPoint?
No, I think you switched it off just because um
Switched off automatically for some reason. So just give me a second. Sorry.
I thought I was saying that I could see people who were raising their
No, I keep getting uh kicked out. Yeah, I don't know what's going on with it. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. All right. So welcome to Scott and his team.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for having us. And um I just want to uh thank my two assistant principals, uh Kim Kavicki, Andrea Cannon, our department heads, Mike Murray with the Humanities, Michelle Medina, Foreign Language, Health and Phys Ed, Amanda Colby, Special Ed, Amy Dion, Science, Art, Business and Vocational, and uh Mike, uh Mike Janicki, our Guidance Director. And also, uh, I just want to shout out uh two deans, Christine Sennelly and Charlene Dunne. We are blessed to have such a great team. And um I, I appreciate all of their efforts. And I also want to thank, uh, not only do we have a great team in the high school, and I, I know everyone has a great team in their schools, but we also have a great team uh at, at the district level. And uh it all starts with Dr. Shaverhood. So I want to uh thank her for her leadership guidance and um handling two jobs over the last couple of years. I don't know how she did it, but uh great job and thank you for your support. Dr. Schwarm has been instrumental in so many different things at the high school. Thank you for all your support. And um Melissa Fay and and Christine, um, thank you for everything that you've done um to help support us. And uh I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our staff. We are also blessed to have a wonderful staff. And I know you've heard it from everyone, how accommodating the staff has been under these unprecedented times. And uh and just uh super flexible and just really looking out for the students and and trying to do what's best for the students. I also want to thank our School Council, Joyce Bakayaki, Jill Johnson, Anne Pearl, Chris Gardner and Megan Cashner for all their support and and kind of being a sounding board uh for a lot of different things that we're trying to do at the high school. So we're going to get started. I'm going to have our assistant principal, Kim Kavicki, uh handle the first slide.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, so starting off with indicators and evidence for student and staff voice. Um, we have our course of studies that we've worked really hard on to be, to make it very transparent and clear. Um, so that it's set up in such a way that there are pathways mapped out in all of our subject areas to allow for flexibility and access um to advanced-level coursework. Um, we also have our senior exit interview process, which is a local graduation requirement. Um, and it allows for students to choose um and showcase their experience over their time at Wareham High School um in what they show in that end of um that culminating experience at the end of their senior year. Um, a huge component of our student and staff voice is going to come through all of the different committees and um different groups that meet. Um, we can say that every single staff member is involved on um one of these committees and many of them are involved in multiple. We also have students that uh participate uh on the committees to give student voice and feedback to our staff. So that's going to come through site-based management, uh NEAS committees, policy review, all of the ones listed there. Um, additionally, we have a very collaborative process. Uh, the SSC team, which is the Student Support Council. Um, this past year, we reformatted and kind of streamlined the process a bit to um allow for staff members to be able to identify struggling students, students of concern. So we send out forms, uh Google form, and any staff member can submit uh any students of concern to the committee. The committee will work on different interventions um to help support that student. We did complete our NYPD, uh which is the IB program, training. And um due to COVID, uh we are, we, we made progress, but we're not completely there in fulfilling that goal. So we pushed that back to um the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, one of the, we take the staff surveys very um seriously. And one of the things we had noticed was that the um exempt exemplars and looking at student work was an area of growth for us. So we worked really hard to start looking at those and discussing them collaboratively, collaboratively within groups. Um, and then also we had teachers, all of our teachers completes one peer observation we had teachers, all of our teachers completes one peer observation per term. So they're in each other's classrooms. And we do document this. More than 30% of our staff ended up making this as an actual official professional practice goal. We also have common planning time where common subject areas meet at least once every other day, have the opportunity to collaborate. So.
And Andrea Cannon is going to take the next slide for us.
So enhancing emotional intelligence was a big focus last year. We as well trained staff on the ruler approach. We also continued that through our general meetings monthly. And we started to implement many of the practices in our classrooms. We also, all staff went to two trauma trainings where the focus was really on how trauma affects students' brains, how they think. And so we discussed that a lot in special ed collaboration meetings, following that, how we were going to implement strategies to help that. And then we learned about a lot in the polybath training where we started to talk about restorative practices. And we had a whole staff training in January, but then we followed up with a lot of PD. The deans really took a lead in that following, following up trainings. For open-ended and self-directed, we try to provide students with the opportunity to lead their own learning. So last year, we established classes, and then we also established curriculum on the Electric Automotive Systems Lab, Game Design, and Computer Science. And we were able to do that through the Project Leadaway Grant.
Okay, I'll bring back Kim for the next slide.
So our librarian, Ms. Lina Hand, she was able to write and secure funding in the amount of $15,000 through an LSTA grant, which is Library Services and Technology Act. So this was able to help transform the library into a collaborative maker space, which allows kids to sort of dig deeper in the curriculum and give them a wider range of experiences where they can lead their own learning, such as like photography, 3D printing, stop-motion animation. There's so many different options for them, sewing, knitting, things like that. The NYPD curriculum units, the first round of them were completed in that affects grades eight through 10. So that meant that all units were developed, one per content area per grade level. For establishing an environment of agency, we continued to expand the number of students involved in both dual enrollment programs. So that's the eighth grade dual enrollment program and the dual enrollment program partnership that we have with Bridgewater State University. We had upwards of 30 students in both of those programs. And then also tied to the IB and NYPD, but in other areas as well, we continued to expand authentic assessments. So trying to move away from the traditional paper pencil-based tests and giving kids an opportunity to have more of a performance-based measure in their classes.
Great. I'll take the next slide. And building trust, this is a big thing for us to build trust, obviously with the staff, and we'll get into the students in a minute. But the peer observations, I know we previously mentioned that. And there's a tremendous amount of trust that needs to be in place in order to have your peer brought in there. I know you heard from the middle school about the lessons that were being shared there. And that same idea, you're allowing someone to come kind of into your environment. And so that's worked out really well. We have some good survey data on trust. And what I'm proud about is, is we had over 400 documented observations in classrooms last year, despite having a shorter year in school. So that's tremendous. And it also, it establishes that trust, but also gives us a pulse on what's going on in the classroom as well. So we can make decisions based on evidence. When we focus on students, and I know you're probably sick of me saying it, but every decision we base is, as I think all of us do, is on what's best for our students. And that's kind of our philosophy. Is it good for students? Then let's do it. If it's not, then we're not. We survey students. As a matter of fact, we surveyed students so much last year, we saw a decline in return. And it was important, especially as we transitioned into a remote setting, to continue to get feedback from the students. And the students are active in all of our committees. We get them involved. We'd like to hear their perception. I know we have a member on the school committee, and she's phenomenal. So that's been great for us. And then I know Kim mentioned the eighth grade dual enrollment and the BSU dual enrollment. And we have 26 students this year in eighth grade dual enrollment and 30 students in Bridgewater State. And that's just phenomenal. I know I've said before, you know, we started with a van, we moved to a minibus, and now we're taking a full bus to Bridgewater every morning. So it's been, it's been a great program. And as you all know, students can finish their freshman year of college before they graduate high school. So tremendous opportunity, tremendous savings. And there's no uncertainty when the student goes into college now. They've taken college-level courses, and they're ready for that next step. So we've all analyzed all the same data. I know you've seen that slide. So we'll move into this year. And you know, our biggest, I wanted to put the first slide, survive the COVID crisis. That's really our biggest goal, and provide support for students. But we've got a lot of other things going on. So I'm going to turn it back over to Kim Kavicki to start us off on the first slide.
So you had heard about our NEAS visit last year when we presented about that. So all staff, every staff member will participate, and the students will also be involved in our NEAS collaborative conference visit. We're actually well on the way to achieving this, given that the visit happened just a few weeks ago. So we have staff and students that are going to be involved in looking at adjustments that need to be made to our senior exit interview process due to these COVID conditions, just because we don't have students necessarily in front of us in the same capacity that we have in the past. And we want to make sure that we're adjusting the process to also meet the needs of the kids as well. We have, we've been in the process of looking at a new schedule. Scheduling committee has been meeting this past year, and we want to continue that throughout this year to see if we're going to have a potential new schedule coming up in the next school year. Part of the NEAS process, but also just best practice in general in education, is looking at creating a vision of a graduate. And what we really want students to leave us with after they've spent not only just their time at the high school, but their time in Wareham schools all the way from kindergarten through 12th grade. So we're going to be working on creating that vision of the graduate. We've really, since the PR observation program, it's been going really well. And we want to work to enhance that, maybe make it so that teachers have, you know, specific things that they're looking at when they go into a classroom. And we also, you heard that, you know, we've done 400 observations this past year. We still want to see if we can increase that number of observations in classrooms by the administrative team, just to focus on continuing to foster that trust with our staff.
All right. And Andrea has the next slide.
So I think this year, more than ever, we know the importance of enhancing emotional intelligence and supporting kids, staff, everyone with their social, emotional well-being, as well as their academics. So one of our focuses this year is to finish up the guidance curriculum that we've been working on, but we're especially focusing on the tier of the social, emotional well-being. So we already began some of this with training during those first PD days. We've also started to implement a few practices. Where teachers are really checking in with students on their social, emotional well-being at the beginning of every class, but we're going to continue that throughout the year. We also want to continue the ruler philosophy. So I think like Minna Forrest said, when they were talking about it, we started, we were really on a roll with the ruler training last year, and then March hit, so kind of came to a halt. So we want to continue to work on that. We are beginning all of our classes, taking the first five minutes to do like a mood meter. Some teachers call it a temperature check. They talk about different things, just checking in with the students to see how they are before we jump into curriculum. So this year also, we have two different outside agencies providing counseling for our kids. It's either recommended through us, or if parents reach out to us looking for help. So we have High Point, who's providing in-person counseling for our kids. And we also have Gosnold, who's providing telehealth services. So this is in addition to any of the special ed minutes for counseling, or what our guidance counselors and social workers do on a regular basis. For the open-ended and self-directed, we, Kim talked about the NYPD and how it, we extended it. So a big focus needs to be on the project plan that we need to establish. So we'll start it with our ninth grade students this year, so that they can meet the 10th grade requirement for that NYPD project.
And Kim, you got the next slide?
Yes. So we want to continue to use the professional development time to continue building that NYPD curriculum. So we have gone through the first round in creating one unit per content area per grade level. And so we need to continue to expand that, so that there are multiple units. And we are able to get that NYPD authorization. We also want to look at adding new classes of high interest for students. You'll be hearing about that at an upcoming meeting when we present the course of studies. So we're really excited about some of those options that will present themselves. You just heard a little bit about the missing pieces to gain NYPD authorizations, one of those being the personal project, where a student will be able to have choice in their project, and they'll be paired up with a staff member who sort of specializes in that subject area. And then also, we want to increase the marketing of all the positive things that we do. We do a lot of really great things. Our staff is amazing. And we're hoping to, you know, continue to expand and get that message out to the community, maybe with some more social media presence, things like that.
Great. And I'll take the last slide. And I just want to give a shout out to Ashley Yates-Pegwin, who is our IB coordinator, who does a tremendous job behind the scenes. I know you heard a lot about IB. And we wouldn't be anywhere near where we are right now without her support. So I'm going to talk about building trust. And boy, is this important this year, more than any year, whether it be with the students or the staff, just trying to provide them with the support they need during this COVID pandemic. You know, it's stressful for students to be taught online, but I will tell you, it's equally stressful for teachers to teach online, because you're kind of serving two masters in our system. We have a synchronous model where you have to attend to the students in your class and to the students online. It's the best model we could have under the circumstances, but boy, it requires a total change in the way you create a routine in your classroom. I was a big person that walked around the classroom quite a bit, was always on the move. You have to scale that back quite a bit, because you do have to be grounded to the computer, because there are two-thirds of the students online. We want to look to continue to enhance the student experience in hybrid. And, you know, I think that's important because the hybrid is new to everyone. This isn't like something that we've been doing for the last 12 years. So we're learning, just as the students are learning. Create a plan for students who are struggling with remote or hybrid learning. You heard about the SSC. We have many layers of intervention that we're providing, but there's still a lot of work to be done on that for students that struggle. Some students love remote learning. They love it. This was like, this was meant for them. But there are other students that are struggling. So we want to make sure we provide that layer of support for them. And then the next goal is something that I think is very important. I think we do a great job with the students that have IEPs. I think we do a great job with the high-achieving students. I want us to focus on the kids that struggle, that need another layer of support. And this isn't just struggling because we're in a remote or a hybrid setting, but would struggle if we were in a traditional setting. And trying to find the support that they need to be successful. And that's our charge this year, one of our many charges this year, as we focus on students. So that is the end of our presentation, and would love to entertain any questions. And I know my department heads are eagerly awaiting any questions you may have that might be specific to, say, a humanities department or something like. So please, fire away.
Okay, so let's just go around. We'll start with Kevin.
First, I just wanted to say hello to Mr. Mike Janicki, who served as my school council back in, back in the day. We have luck to have him. Scott, I was glad to see that you tried to get peer observations going, talking about building trust with your staff members. How many staff participated in peer observations? Is this something you're going to continue going forward with? And is there any way you can entice more staff? I know some unions have actually negotiated observations off the list with department heads, administrators in lieu of getting more peer observation. I don't know if you've ever considered that, or again, I'm just trying to see how many people are participating in that.
Sure. So if I, everyone is involved, or everyone is supposed to be involved. It's something that we evaluate, well, we can't evaluate, something we talk about specifically with the, you heard about 30% use it as a goal. So we talk about it during the evaluation period. I would be hesitant to take it as the way you described, where they could use it as an observation, that would be an official observation, because I want this to happen a little more organically, and I don't want it to be punitive and no care. I want the teachers to go in there, and sometimes they have a lens, they're going in there, maybe they, they're struggling with classroom management. So the department head might recommend, you know, two or three teachers that are really strong with management. Or maybe it's, you know, ironically, technology back in the, you know, now everyone's going to have that as an area of strength now, kind of forced technology. But they may go in and see how a teacher utilizes technology. I would hate to use it in a valuary manner, but it's great for teachers to go through. And what I enjoyed most was out of those 30% that use it as a professional practice goal, almost everyone had an anecdotal story of what they saw and how they brought it back into their classroom. And that was pretty powerful. I know you heard in the slide presentation, we hope to maybe even give them an angle, a little more of an angle to go in there with, or maybe even have an opportunity to kind of be, use the form that we use and go in there and kind of see what we see. So there's a lot of opportunities. But honestly, this is our third year, I believe, doing this. And it's been great. It's been, I think, one of the best things that we've done from a PD standpoint. And we do give PD through the departments for the teachers for doing this, because they are doing it, you know, on their own time. So there's PD for research in there as well.
Great. I think that part of the professional practice goals is great. So keep it up. Thanks.
If they choose, if they choose to make it a special practice goal, we don't force them. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Sure. Just turning to the survey. At the top, it says, you know, your number is 57 for the 2019 to 2020 year. And it says it's for the Wareham High in Cooperative School. Of that number, the 57 number, how many staff would you say is the cooperative school?
We'll tell you it's one.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I saw it.
She's awesome, by the way.
Quite amazing.
Yeah. She might, she has to be. So, you know, really a tough act to follow with all the other schools. They really increased dramatically. But you have some really solid, solid survey results here. Just want to, just want to ask about, I think, one of them, this number 11 here. You jumped from a 59 to a 77. And that was a, it says, when I received training, the leadership team checks to ensure that their training made a difference and led to intended outcomes. How do you think you succeeded there?
We made that an area of focus with the department heads. After, after going from 68 to 59, we really made that a focus for our departmental improvement plans, to make sure that they incorporate that into their department meetings. Because there aren't as many opportunities for professional development, even if, even if you have all the money to do it, there's not a lot of opportunities. So by, when you have an opportunity to send someone out, having them come back and report out to the department, and then having the department head check to make sure the intended outcome was there. And so it's been, that's really honestly a testament to the department heads and the work they've been doing. It's really, there's not much that we've done, kind of the administrative team, it's more departmental.
Just the other day, if I may, the history teacher that was trained in the civics curriculum was, you know, hosting her own professional development with other, you know, history teachers to get that rolling this year. So that's how, that's how it works. It's a great way to do it, because people listen to their colleagues.
It's, it's a great way to do it because people listen to their colleagues. Alright, that, that's all I had. Uh, just keep, keep up the great work.
Thank you. It's all the team. We got a great team.
Uh, Mary? Alright, I don't hear Mary, so I'll, I'll go to April. April, I'm looking at the chat. I don't see anything.
It's long.
Okay, Scott, do you see it?
I, I do see it. I'm going to read it here. I, I just saw it now.
Well, I'll read it out loud just for the, the benefit of everyone. Um, I am thankful at the high school how much communication I've gotten this year regarding my son's status with his grades and classes. Are you finding a large number of students with similar motivation issues or need for communications home? What more can working parents do to ensure attendance and participation with the older kids to help them succeed? I know personally, I live on Power School, but wasn't sure if there were any other measures parents of the older kids, even upper middle school age, can use to help them stay on track. I feel that the younger kids seem to be more adaptive to these changes, so hoping to try to get an idea of how to better help the older kids should they need it.
Sure. So, uh, thank you, uh, April. Appreciate the, the positive note and the feedback. So I, I, I'll try and go through these. Um, I, I think April's doing everything. My, my go-to is get on Power School, check in at least every other day, uh, of the staff. And I think that's the same for whether it's high school or middle school. That's the first line of defense. So you can know what's going on. The other piece is click on the teacher's name. It gives you their email. If you have any specific questions, reach out to them. Check out the teacher's landing pages because everything is on there. You can sign up to be a, a parent in the Google classrooms. That's another opportunity is to jump in on that. So I think those are, those are kind of three things that can be done, um, to make sure your child succeeds. And, uh, and I, I know April's already doing most of those things. So that, that's kind of the advice I would have. And then if you're still not happy with the results, then you call Mike Janicki in guidance or his secretary and set up a, a parent teacher meeting. And, uh, I think that's, you know, a good way to go right there. Uh, but you know, there's, there's three or four things you can do that are real easy. And, um, and usually there's, there's good, uh, payback on those, on those efforts. So those, those would be my, my pieces of advice.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't see Mary on the meeting anymore. Hopefully she comes back. But I will just say that, um, myself, I'm just, again, the theme of collaboration just has extended to the high school, uh, which is great. You know, there's so many opportunities. I think I, as a parent, you know, of graduates of the school, I take for granted the opportunities that are there. But I know that I shouldn't do that because, you know, you work hard, you all work so hard to create these opportunities for the kids and and I shouldn't take them for granted because, you know, you have, those are some really great things happening. In that spirit though, I know at high school, a lot, um, a lot of kids, the extracurricular things are so important. And I'm not talking about sports. I'm, I'm talking about everything. We'll hear about that later. Everything's. Band and DECA and all those things that, you know, kids love. Uh, is, is any of that happening? Is any of, what are you doing to supplement?
Sure. So a lot of the clubs are, are still able to meet, um, whether it be DECA, e- even drama is, 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 uh, meeting now and they're going to have, uh, you know, a presentation virtually, obviously. So, you know, the, the biggest one that's taken the hit is, is music and, and Amy and, and Jason Roth and myself are really working on, uh, trying to come up with a, a safe plan. Um, for those kids to, to be able to do something. They've been outside up until this point, obviously. Uh, but it's getting a little cold for the woodwinds and the brass outside. So, uh, we're working on a few logistical pieces that we'll be hopefully presenting to Dr. Shaverhood. Um, to see if we're above board with what we want to do there. So that's been a difficult one. But DECA, everything has been virtual. So it's different, but, um, it's better than the alternative. I know that, uh, Foreign Language Club and Safe Schools and, uh, Chess Club. And now Sean, um, I think he'll officially be appointed, uh, for the, to coach the esports, uh, tomorrow. So all that is, um, you know, is taking place virtually, but it's, it's not the same, but it's, we're doing the best we can for the students because as you mentioned, that's such an important piece of the high school experience. And it, it has been impacted. Uh, but we're doing our best to try and keep it going for the students and, and make sure they have those experiences.
Okay. And just one last question. Um, you talk about supporting the kids who are struggling, you know, the ones in the middle. I'm sure you're already supporting them. Um, so I'm just wondering, like, what are some of your ideas of what else you will do?
Well, you know, I'm hoping once we get past this, this COVID craziness, um, to maybe have an academic support, uh, for students that are not on IEPs. The students on IEPs kind of get that uh, as part of the, the plan, but hoping to somehow in this budget, find a way to get someone to teach a couple of sections to support the students that really need that support. I, I think it's necessary. And, uh, I think we'll get some, uh, some great payback. And most importantly, I think the students will be able to succeed that are put in that, in that classroom. So that's kind of the plan that we're hoping for, for next year. This year, uh, we've got a lot of supports in place. Uh, the teachers are, you know, using some of their free time. They have time after school to meet with students and, and really working individually, uh, with the students to support them. Um, I know I've, I've been working with disengaged students more this year than ever before. Uh, my deans do a wonderful job of keeping track of attendance. And, uh, I've had the pleasure of, uh, going to 12 houses so far this year, uh, to home visit, uh, students that are disengaged. And I'm happy to report that six of them are re-engaged. Three, the jury's still out, and three will be virtually online with the fourth district court for a CRA. So, we're still working on, on the three that we hope can see it our way. But, uh, we, we, I think we have a lot of supports in place. You heard about the SSC as well. Student Sport Council and that, we just had a meeting actually Wednesday, about a two-hour meeting, um, to talk about students that are struggling and, and trying to figure out what intervention we can put in play uh, for them to have success.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned, um, school council. So I just want to say thank you for allowing me to continue on the school council. My school council membership predates my school committee uh, election by, I don't know, 20 years I've been a school council.
We appreciate, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Guys, I think Mike had his hand up earlier.
He did. Thank you. Uh, Joyce, I just had a, a couple of questions for all of the principals, if I could.
Sure.
Alright, so I mean, well, Scott's still there, but, um, it's, it's all of them. Um, I, I guess I'd like to get your thoughts on how you, how you, you feel currently how next year's surveys might turn out. I mean, do you think we're going to keep these trends up?
I think it's difficult for all of us to stay up. Uh, there's only one place to go when you're up, but, uh, and under these circumstances, I, I think it's strive to keep them up, but it might be difficult because it's, it's a tough environment right now with, with COVID. But we'll shoot, you know, we're going to shoot for their improvement, but, uh, they're with us if they go down a couple of percentage points.
I, I agree with Scott. It's a really, um, you know, this, this is a really tough year. It's, it's a tough year to keep everyone's spirits high. Um, and it's also, you know, really tough to connect with people through Zoom. So although we're in person, we're not really together like we normally are. We can't have celebrations like we normally have. Um, it's, it's really, really tough even connect with staff. So, um, our priority is certainly on our students and supporting our staff. But I, I wouldn't be surprised if we have a little bit of a lower results.
I would just echo what they have said because we've had to do things differently this year. And I know that we'll see some of that with the surveys next year. Um, you know, even to do a walkthrough in a classroom, I always hesitate about going in because, you know, anyone ever had to quarantine. If I'm going in every other, every classroom every day, that's a concern I have. So there are going to be some definite things that will be a little bit different.
I echo what, um, the other administrator said too. It's just a different time, uh, it'll be interesting to see how the surveys result.
Alright, um, thank you. And, uh, last question, um, are you getting questions about possibly going to a, um, a full-day hybrid this year? What are your thoughts on that?
I'm going to say, when you say full day, there's going, it can't be the traditional full day we've had because of the fact after the middle school, high school run, the buses need to be cleaned. So they may need to get out a little earlier in order to keep our time the same. So that's something that we'd have to work out. And then the other things are just logistics as far as feeding kids and all of that.
And, uh, yeah, and honestly, I think we all want our kids back a, as much as possible, but not having the students for lunch. I did not realize how huge that would be for us. We have not transmitted from student to student at all. And, and I, I think that's due to the fact that we're not taking, we're not having lunch in the school. So.
I, Mike, I hope that we can get to that point at, at some time. And I hope we can time it to dovetail with the end of a term. And I hope it happens sooner rather than later, but there's a lot of logistics that need to be put in place uh, for us to get to that point. But I, I believe that can happen at, at some point in time this winter.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I'm, Joyce, I'm trying to get my video back, so.
Okay. Alright, alright, thank you. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone. Dr. Schwam, the principals. Just outstanding and you can certainly see the collaboration and teamwork. I, I just want to share with everyone how grateful I am and what a top-notch group we have working in Wareham. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Proud moment.
It is, it is. Be proud.
If we were in person, I'd clap.
Alright, thank you. Thanks to everyone who hung in there so late. Alright, I found the agenda.
Joyce, do you need a motion to go past 10 o'clock?
Not yet.
Okay.
But I will. Stand by. Okay, so next on the agenda is the food service report, uh, from Mr. Russo.
Hold on, I'm going to pull that up. Just give me a second. Alright.
Okay, um, good evening, Mike. Uh, operations update, if we could move on to the next slide. Um, so I'm going to be referring to the bullets on the left, uh, as we go through. And so, uh, I'm going to start off by talking a little bit about last school year. Let me back up to the 1819 school year. At the end of the 1819 school year, we rolled $71,000, uh, from the previous year to the 1920 school year. Last school year, uh, we spent, uh, we had expenditures of a little over $1.6 million and had revenue slightly above that by $8,000. So we were able to roll, uh, to this school year, $79,000 in funds. And, uh, so you'll see that reflected on this slide. Um, last school year, we applied for and received, uh, $34,000 in grants. Uh, so far this school year, we've received $40,000 and spent it, um, on, uh, on equipment uh, at the schools. And, uh, we did apply for that last school year, but we've actually gotten it and spent it this school year. And we have uh, $59,000 still in, uh, pending grant applications. Uh, and, uh, I'm hopeful that we'll get a significant chunk of that. Um, if we look, uh, now down at the net profit loss line of, uh, I'd like to just point out a, a couple of things. The first is that we did, uh, post, uh, net losses in August and September. We had a pause at the end of August, uh, where we, before we started the school year of a couple of weeks. And then we started back up, uh, on August 31st, which was officially the first day of the school year. We started back up with our, or it was going to be the official first day of the school year. That's when we started, uh, back up with our food distribution. And, um, we, um, basically had a little bit of a, a lull in, uh, participation. And between that and, um, and some other factors, we ended up posting a loss for September, uh, as well as August. But then in October, uh, we were able to post a, uh, net profit of $33,000. So we made back that lost round and doing well in November as well. A significant part of this is the fact that we have, uh, much higher participation rates uh, with our current hybrid model of instruction. Um, and as you'll see right there, the last bullet I'll just refer to is that, um, in December, uh, we're going to still be paying, uh, payroll and, uh, some other overhead costs and, uh, but we won't be, uh, distributing meals. So we won't, that's going to be paused during the December, uh, vacation. And so the revenue generated by the meal reimbursements won't, uh, cover all the costs. So we will have a, a, uh, net loss in the month of December. Uh, if we could move on to the next, or does, why don't I talk to the next slide and then can answer questions on both slides? We are currently operating, um, five sites. Uh, this is, uh, separate from the meals being provided to students. And, um, two of those sites are, are schools. One is Wareham Middle School and one is Deccos Elementary. So we actually, uh, provide free meals to, uh, the general public for all children 18 years and younger. They don't have to be Wareham Public School students, uh, at these five sites. And then, um, we separately, uh, have what are called closed enrollment sites. And those are each of the schools where we provide the meals, uh, that the students take home at dismissal each day, uh, in the hybrid model. Um, you can see the numbers there for, uh, how we did from March to August 14th. August 14th was, uh, the last, um, day of our summer program. And then, uh, we basically had a pause of two weeks before, before we started back up on August 31st. And, um, I just gave a snapshot of August 31st to December 4th. Uh, you can see how many meals we serve there. And, uh, the total meals you can see between, uh, March 16th and December 4th was 396,000. We're well over 415,000 as of yesterday. In order to do this, it has taken, uh, a lot of, uh, effort and a lot of contribution from our staff, uh, both in production and distribution. Uh, we have, we've been, we've teamed up with, uh, other departments, transportation department with, uh, the, uh, administrators, custodians. You name it, everybody's been, uh, supporting us and, and been part of the effort. And I just want to say thank you, uh, to everyone because without that team effort and identifying and overcoming challenges, uh, we would not have been as successful as we have been today. Um, and then I am now ready to answer any questions.
Okay. So we'll go around again and start with Kevin.
Yeah, I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Um, Mary, I believe I saw Mary back on.
Oh, awesome.
Okay. April? Let me look at the chat. Um, April is asking if you expect any further grants due to COVID.
Um, there, uh, yes, uh, there are some, uh, COVID-related grants for which we've applied. Um, and, uh, that is part of that, uh, 56 or $59,000 that I've listed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike?
I know, just, um, great job as usual. Uh, I guess I, I, while I got you here, I'll just ask, um, any, any particular plans for, for next year when we open up mine? Any planning that you might want to mention at this time?
Um, no, as far as the new school, uh, we, uh, we're coordinating with the principals on, uh, and superintendent, of course, is directing it. We're making sure that we, uh, have a good, uh, plan for, um, all the required equipment, that it's in place, that we. We're making sure that we, uh, have a good, uh, plan for, um, all the required equipment, that it's in place, that we, uh, have purchased all, you know, everything from furniture to kitchen equipment and such. Um, that is all in work. And, um, I can say that, uh, my staff is, uh, confident that, um, we've talked about it. Uh, we've had some meetings just, uh, laying out some general plans for next school year, and we're confident that we'll be ready to go.
Great.
Um, so I guess I don't have any questions. I would just say, um, you're, you're hard on yourself. You know, you point out your losses, um, but, but all in all, it looks great. And I would just thank you for your leadership through all of this, you know, through, you talk about having to pivot. You know, everyone has had to pivot and you've had to, had to do the same.
Well, thank you very much.
And I would say the same, as I said, about the schools, um, as far as opportunities. And, you know, what you're supplying to the, to the children in Wareham. Not all kids in every town are getting the, you know, getting food for the weekend and, and they're not all getting that. So, so I do appreciate what you're able to do for the kids in Wareham.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
That number is staggering to me. Half a million meals, almost.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It's staggering. I just can't even imagine.
There's definitely a need.
Yes. It's amazing.
And the effort of, you know, by so many to make that happen is really amazing. You know, April asked about grant money, and I would say, I know I've asked you about this before, and you said it really has nothing to do with you as food service. But the families in Wareham will be receiving funds directly. Is that from the federal government?
I think you're talking about the P E B T and, um, yes, that comes through the federal, it comes down to the state and then the state administers it.
Okay. Uh, I mean, but that is, that is due to the fact that Wareham is a, a free lunch district, is that?
Um, I think that, um, in the past, it was Wareham, um, I, I, I believe that Wareham had, um, greater access to it because, um, of our, our district being, um, in what's called community eligibility, uh, provision where we have a higher need. Um, however, um, I think more recently, it's just being, it's been identified that everywhere it's high need. And so I think it's being applied pretty much uniformly, uh, across all districts now, uh, regardless of, um, the, um, any particular district being in, in C E P or not.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for, for joining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the winter sports.
Yeah, and I have that too, so just give me a second.
While, while Andrea's getting that together, um, I just want to thank Ed Rodriguez. I know he's here today and he'll be speaking. Um, he has had to put together a spring season and coordinate all that. And then eventually the spring season was canceled. But before it was canceled, there were about three to four modifications that were made in that schedule for the spring. And then ultimately it was finally canceled. Fast forward to the fall, same thing. Ultimately, this one was pushed to what's going to be called Fall Two, which will happen, happen after the winter season. And then winter season, uh, two weeks ago, we thought we were going to have winter track, basketball and hockey. And then about a week before the season was going to start, we learned that winter track would be pushed to fall. So a lot of changes, a lot of adaptations, a lot of get the order ready, Ed. No, we don't need the order. And then ultimately, about two weeks before the season, we got the order ready for winter. So Ed has done a tremendous job. Uh, he's got a secretary that works part-time for him, Sandy Barboza, who has done a wonderful job. And all the coaches have really done a great job. So we'll go through the presentation. I know you already saw it, so we'll try and be brief. So the first thing, uh, it is, these are the sports that we're offering, uh, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey. And when track was kind of pulled out from underneath us, I looked at the numbers that we anticipated participating in basketball and hockey, and it was somewhere between fifty and sixty students. And I said to Ed, we can't run a winter sports season with only fifty to sixty kids being impacted. So we put our heads together and came up with this conditioning and fitness, which we have done in the past, uh, for off-season athletes. So we just kind of, uh, pushed it for the track kids that maybe didn't have a sport to be able to do this. Got the track coach on board and his assistants. And I think it's going to be a great segue for a lot of our athletes because if you think about it, our last season ended in late February, uh, our last season before this winter season. So these student athletes have been out of the gym, out of the weight room theoretically, uh, at least in the school for a whole year. So we're very excited for that and we'll move on to the next slide. So general information, it started on Monday. It ends no later than two twenty-one. Uh, Ed reports our, our season will actually end more like the fifteenth. Since this is all about the students and the student safety, we felt it was very important, no spectated at any games. If things get better, we can revisit it, but we've made no promises to parents. And I know that's difficult, but one caveat is we are working with W C T V and they will be filming all of the, uh, sub-varsity and varsity games for all sports this winter, uh, live on W C T V. So, uh, that's a great feature for us and a great alternative, uh, for the parents that want to see, uh, their children in sports. Locker rooms have been closed all year and they'll continue to be closed. This includes for coaches, referees, players. Students must leave the parking lot directly after the event. It's usually not an issue in the winter. It's kind of cold out there, but it can be an issue in the spring. No weekend games or practices because when the custodians leave on Friday, the building is sanitized. We cannot have anyone in after the fact, and we're running this on a shoestring budget, so we can't really pay overtime for custodians. Uh, students will not be allowed in the school before or after away games. So when the bus shows up, they get on the bus, they go, the school is off ground for them. And as you know, sometimes the, the buses get back very late, so we just can't have those students in the building after it's been sanitized. Um, all the water bottles have been shut off. We are not providing any water for the athletes. They're all bringing their own water bottles. We encourage them to have their names on them and to never share them. Temperatures are taken and documented by the, either the trainer or the team's coach before they enter the gym. And obviously goes without saying, masks must be worn at all times. And we do not feel that gator masks provide the same level of, of, uh, security that we would need, uh, as compared to traditional masks. So we do not allow for the gator masks. Okay, so some, uh, modifications that have been made for basketball. Games are at four forty-five and six thirty Tuesdays and Fridays only. I mentioned the live stream. Uh, the only bathrooms that are open are the foyer bathrooms. Those are the ones that are open for town meeting. Uh, we only allow two people in at a time. This is the same protocol, uh, we use during the day. Uh, no one can arrive until twenty minutes before the game and five minutes before practice time. We have a fifteen-minute empty gym time between games and practices. And at that point in time, we do some sanitization of the game halls, the seats, et cetera. We have extended the benches to allow for six feet between players and coaches on the benches. Obviously, you cannot have close huddles. Maximum practice time is ninety minutes per day, per team. And, and we have one gym we're using, so that's just to kind of spread things out. And then we kind of, we ask that the students take their trash with them and make sure they, uh, they bring that at the end of practice with them. So hockey's a little bit different. Uh, we only have enough students for varsity games. Athletes can argue the rink rules. They can access the rink fifteen minutes before an event. There's no locker rooms, so they have to get dressed on the benches, uh, right by the boards. Um, and, uh, they can basically, they have to come in dressed and they put their skates on in the rink. Uh, if they have games, there's a center stairwell and one team goes to the left, one goes to the right. Uh, practices are maximum sixty minutes in length and, um, they have arrows for students, uh, for people coming in and out of the rink. They have to follow the arrows. Conditioning and fitness is at the Boys and Girls Club and hopefully on the track, if the weather cooperates, they might need a shovel now, but hopefully, uh, snow melts. Uh, they run their practices Monday through Fridays from three to four thirty. Um, these are during school days. Uh, they're going to work on winter vacation time. Uh, they'll get that coordinated in the next few days and, uh, maybe opportunities if it's safe to do so. They have some independent competitions that they may be able to get involved in. Again, that's only if it's safe to do so, and that is after, well, after New Year's. So, um, there are a lot of changes for the season. Um, for instance, um, Mr. Julie, you might be able to answer this better than I can, but on the free throws, they only allow one person, uh, per team at the bottom of the key. And, uh, so there's a lot of rule changes like that, uh, by sport. Um, we felt that with, uh, a modified season and uncertainty, uh, we would not charge user fees. Uh, if the season gets canceled for any reason, uh, as I've told Ed, we're day-to-day, so anything can happen one day to the next. So we just thought it'd be cleaner that way. Um, unfortunately, no money would be brought in for admission charges. And, uh, as I mentioned, it's a reduced season, twelve games. State has no playoffs, no tournaments this year. And, uh, when we broke it down based on the cost, uh, to run this, taking out the gate receipts, taking out the user fees, it actually will cost the school budget the same amount. And obviously the big reason for that is less games, less transportation, less officials. Um, but obviously, most importantly, we're providing a great experience to our student body. So we've done, Ed and I have done more, uh, for winter sports than I think we've had to do for all three seasons in a year combined. Um, we've met with all the coaches and gone through all the protocols. I won't bore you with the sports-specific protocols, but, um, they're all using electronic whistles now, uh, which is great. Um, obviously, we don't want them blowing into a whistle, so they all have that. And they all ha- have an app now, so all communication goes through this, uh, product called the Team App, which you may or may not be familiar with, but it's an app that they can communicate with their student athletes. They can put up schedules, notices to when the buses are going to leave, reminders. And most importantly, that the players can communicate with the coach, um, which we thought was really important to have that in place. So we met with all the coaches, um, talked about protocols. And then we met with, uh, the student and parents for all three sports and we had great meetings. And, uh, the parents were just really appreciative of the effort and the students. It was, it was awesome to see the students in school on Monday. You could just, you could just tell the environment was a lot different on Monday than it had been in a long time in our school. And, and I think that's a, a testament to athletics coming back into play. So that's, uh, kind of our presentation. I, I don't want to bore you with sports-specific pieces because there's a lot more based on the sport and the, uh, M I A guidance that's been provided. I'm really happy to report that every school in the conference has winter sports as of today. Uh, and again, Dr. Shaver Hood and I have said, you know, it's day-to-day, but we're putting our best foot forward. Uh, the students, uh, are appreciative, parents are appreciative. And, um, I know it's tough times to, to get this going, but I, as I told the coaches, they need to make sure we do a great job with this because I think if we do a great job with winter sports, this will springboard us into fall sports and it will spring sport, springboard us into spring sports. And, um, our student body, as you know, uh, a very high percentage of students are involved in athletics and extracurriculars. Uh, almost every kid is involved in at least one thing after school in our building. And obviously many kids are involved in multiple activities. It's a huge part of the comprehensive education that goes on in any secondary school. And, uh, we're just excited to get this off and running. And, uh, we're going to do our best and then hopefully we can keep it going for the whole season. So will, answer any questions? And Ed's here, he's really hoping you have a lot of questions for him.
Um, just before I ask the other members if they have questions, I just want to point out that we're not voting tonight to approve the sports. And the reason because per the M I A guidelines, our high school is not all remote. So there is no school committee vote required. I just wanted to make sure everybody, everybody knew that's why we're not voting tonight. So, um, we'll start. Go ahead, Kevin.
Um, and I realize that we don't have a vote, although interestingly, the other school committees in the area have voted on this. But I understand that we're not required to. Um, and I know I don't want to come across as the Grinch here, uh, who stole athletics. Um, I think everyone knows that I value athletics a great deal as a former Wareham athlete, Wareham coach, parent of four, former Wareham athletes. I know what, what athletics mean to kids in Wareham and my own family. So it's not easy that I question this, but I, I do have to question some of it. I don't question the motives at all of Scott or Ed or anybody. I, I know you're doing it because you think it's in the best interest of kids. And I'm bringing up my concerns because I think it's in the best interest of kids, uh, as well. Um, so I have six quick questions. I hope they're quick. Um, first question is basically risk reward. Is the reward worth the risk? To me, it comes, it really comes down to that a, a lot. And I don't know if you have a, I'll just give you a quick moment to the.
Case is transmitted inside the school. And, uh, obviously, you know, that could change at any point in time. Uh, but I, I, I'm going with that a- as, as part of our reasoning a- and part of our, you know, grounding to stand on. I, I think, you know, you, you have to give the students an opportunity to do this. If it, if we get to a point where it's unsafe, I'll be the first one to pull the plug. It won't even have to go to Dr. Shaver Hood because I'll pull the plug. I'm never going to put a kid in an unsafe environment. I feel with working with the conference, working with the M I A, all the precautions put in place, I feel we're in a really good place. And again, it could change in a day or two, but I, I felt it was in the best interest of the students for us to have a winter season.
So second thing is Massachusetts is in phase three, step one right now. Wareham's in the red. There were more COVID deaths today in the United States than any other day in our history. And there's two huge family holidays coming up with as good as be family gatherings. Could there be a worse time to introduce an indoor sport?
Well, we're pretty, we're pretty safe on what we're doing with the sport right now. Obviously, like Mr. Palladino said, anything could change, but all the protocols we have in place, uh, it, it seems pretty good. I think, uh, a lot of the sports in the fall went over pretty well without a lot of hitches. There were some and we could have some, but I, I do feel it is pretty safe for these kids that are in, that are doing the sport right now with all the things that we have in place for them.
I guess the only difference is we're inside now versus outside.
Yeah, that is the difference. But if you came by, you could see what we do. It's like, it's like clockwork. We had it done. I was very, very pleased. I didn't know myself. I'm not going to lie to you. I didn't know myself what was going, as far as it would, it would go so well. The first three days couldn't have gone any better, uh, as far as everything we wanted to do and the way we did it. Now, like Mr. Palladino said, who knows, something could happen. But I'm very pleased with the way we have things organized, the way they're doing it. The kids are following it to the team what they have to do and hopefully we can get through it.
So as we've done a really good job, I think, in the schools right now by not mixing cohorts. And right now, just by the hockey team being together, we're with Carver High School. And when the league gets together, we're going to be with all these other league schools. So cohorts, not mixing cohorts was great. Now we can't help it. We're, we're absolutely mixing cohorts going forward. So it seems like we're defeating something that we set up to prevent. Uh, I don't know if that's really not a question, just a statement. Uh, here's a quick question. Is it true that half the girls' basketball team is in quarantine right now?
There are, there are six girls in quarantine right now. They've been, it's, they've had exposure through their family. And, uh, I deal with the nurse on a daily basis. Uh, we give her the uptakes on what's going on. She calls the families. And, uh, as of right now, there are six girls, yes.
But none of them are positive. They're just, no, in quarantine protocol. What I'm pleased with is they all brought it to the coach's attention and put themselves in quarantine to protect the team, to make sure that we didn't have to shut down that, that team season.
If an opposing, if an opposing team member tests positive for COVID, say within a, a week after you've played that team, what is the protocol or process then? Who, who notifies whom? Is it the Board of Health from the other town notifies our Board of Health? Is it A D to A D? How does that information get, uh, pass on to, to, to you?
It would be A D to A D. We, we, the Board of Health isn't always as timely as a phone call from an A D to another A D. I mean, that, that may come through the Board of Health eventually, but the protocol in the conference is, is A D to A D. And I'm sure principal to principal too.
And, and what would happen if that were the case? If we just played a team that has an athlete who, say, tested positive?
Well, I, I would have to discuss this with the nurse and Mr. Palladino to come up with a definite decision on everything. We talked to the other school and then we move from there. I think every case is going to be a little different. Um, and, uh, we'd have to cross that bridge when it comes to it. We haven't. that bridge when it comes to it. We haven't, it hasn't happened yet, and
It would depend, it would depend too on the contact. In other words, was it court? Was it player on the bench? How much contact did they have with our team? Our nurse, Marion Yakabuchi, has been phenomenal with working through various scenarios with students and staff. And she's got a great protocol in regards to how much time do they have with the person? Were they in close contact? So we would have to review, if it was a starting player, we'd have to review the video and see who was in contact. Obviously, if it's a man-to-man situation, it might be easy to identify one student. We would always err on the side of caution. If we have to shut it down for 10 days, I would be the first one to shut it down for 10 days because we are not going to put our students in a position where they could get sick or hurt. So if it means shutting it season down for 10 days, so be it. The kids, if they get six games, that's better than nothing. We're going to err on the side of caution with the
All right. I'm sorry. I just have to interject here, Kevin. You can continue, but
I'll be quick.
No, it's okay. It's all right. It's just it's approaching 10 o'clock. So I just, I would have to ask for a motion to carry the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Mike Flaherty, I move that we go beyond the hour of 10 o'clock to complete our meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Mike?
Hi.
Kevin?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes. 500. Thank you. Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Good to go. That's it. I know that you talked about a lot of rule changes. Like I know in basketball, you can't take the ball under the basket. You said there's going to be six feet between everyone on the bench. Doesn't that all go out the window once the game starts and everyone is pressing, rebounding, boxing? I don't get the logic.
I don't get some of the logic either, Kevin, but it goes, the ball is a dead ball. You've got to take the ball on the sideline, foul line extended. On a made basket, though, you can press full court as usual. It's supposed to be instead of three feet, you've got to be six feet. On a foul shot, Mr. Palladino had it a little right, but a little wrong. You're going to have
I'm a hockey player.
Two people on the inside, defensive rebounds, a foul shooter, and then two offensive players, which I don't like. Our league might take out one of those offensive players. And then there's no jump ball to start the game. There's going to be a coin toss, and one team will start with it and alternating possessions. They're going to have a quick whistle on five-second calls and tie-ups, and do the best they can. I have two grandsons that play eight-year-old travel basketball, and I've gone all over the place with them with many tournaments. And honestly, it's been fine. It's been fine.
And I've been watching from afar. My son plays club soccer at the U and H. And they have indoor basketball like you wouldn't believe going on. And there's a lot of modifications. And I was talking to the guy running it, and knock on wood, they haven't had any issues yet either.
Yeah.
Well, I hope there are no issues, but just these modifications honestly are window dressing because
Yeah, I agree, Kevin. Kevin, I agree. You might as well just play the normal game, you know? It doesn't make sense what they're doing. It really isn't. It's not going to solve a problem. Let's put it that way. The kids are handling, you know what I'm really impressed with as far as the handling, playing with the masks, much better than I thought they would. And we're constantly watching this, myself and the trainer and the coaches, you know, and they've been pretty good with it. I've been very pleased with the way they've handled it so far.
I think the trash talking is going to go up with the mask, though. My last question. Last question. The MIA just sent an update on December 10. They said districts and programs should consult with the local health department to determine what risk level to start that program safely. My question is, have we consulted with the local health department, and what have they said about this?
I consulted with the local health department, and they did not have any comments. They were going to get back to me, and they've not done so yet.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Look, I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm being overly cautious. I hope it works out. I still think it's not the right decision at this time.
I understand. We're going to try our best, Kevin.
I know that.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to just echo every syllable that Mr. Brugge just said. You know, I know it's the best of intentions. You know, I love sports. I love going to sports, you know, basketball and hockey. I love it. For all the reasons that Mr. Brugge just mentioned, I'm not on board with this. I'm not comfortable at all with it. And we don't have any say on it. It's odd to me, but it is what it is. Now consider this. So when this first started, you know, I had broached the subject of, listen, you know, can the school committee, you know, just do a tour, if you used to do in the past? We're not allowed in the buildings. You know, we were told straight up, like, no, that's not a good idea. But I mean, I'm not going to set a pick on Ms. Chandler or check Ms. Slonik into the boards, you know what I mean? But that's what's going on, you know, with these games. And Mr. Vardus, you just kind of made the point, you know, there's really no difference, you know, playing without masks.
I'm sorry, there's no difference? They're playing without masks? I'm sorry.
The rule, I mean, what's the point of all these masks if they're all just going to be, you know, together anyway, struggling against each other and everything? You know, and yeah, it probably makes sense tells you like, yeah, what is the difference? And so also consider, we couldn't even drop kids off at a different bus stop because we didn't want to mix those cohorts. And yet here we are, mixing cohorts from all kinds of towns that are allowed to come into the building, and yet we can't even come into the building. It's not just about the kids. We do want to protect the kids, but want to protect, you know, their parents and their grandparents, you know? And these kids, these kids are usually non-symptomatic, and yet they can infecting, you know, their parents and grandparents when they get home. I was disappointed to hear about this. And now, I understand principals, they get a good deal of autonomy when it comes to this stuff, but ultimately, who approved this?
I approved it.
Thank you.
And I want to tell you, every school in the conference is doing this. So
I don't make a right. I'm sorry.
I understand that. But I'm going to tell you right now, that if I was in this school, and you told me we didn't have winter sports, I'd be knocking at the next door over trying to get into the next school. And I'm not saying that's why we're doing it. We're doing this because we feel it's best for students. But I'm telling you right now, you would have an onslaught of students signing out of Wareham High School to go to O'Rochester or Bourne to be involved in sports, because that's how much sports mean to many high school students.
I wish we had discussed this beforehand. I wish we had Dr. Mendez, the school doctor. I wish you could have invented this better with the school committee.
Okay, so April has some comments in the chat, so I'm just going to read those. She says, I know that community and peer-parent support really is a huge asset to the athletic department budgets. Are there additional fundraising ideas to help offset losing ticket and snack revenues? Also, will away games be livestreamed? She does have another question, but I'll stop there for right now.
So unfortunately, we can't bring outsiders into away games. So they would be taped by the local cable companies, which we could get, obviously, through their websites, but they will not be livestreamed like WCTV. In regards to fundraising ideas, what we have done is we have crunched the numbers to make sure in the end the winter season this year would cost, from a budgetary standpoint, the same amount. At this point, the focus really has been on safety and security and not necessarily on fundraising. We've actually told the teams to not even worry about fundraising. Let's just worry about staying safe.
Okay. And she says, there were many youth sports played in the fall, summer, from baseball, basketball to soccer. Is there any data to show that those sports or programs had COVID exposure?
Well, I can just say from my personal experience, I played a baseball thing this summer for my two grandsons. They played basketball. They played flag football. And everything has gone pretty, pretty well, to be honest with you. I'm not saying that something couldn't happen, but it's gone pretty well. And hopefully, this will continue.
I'm not sure about data, but, you know, there were situations where teams had to shut down in the fall. You know, it was an issue then as well. And, you know, it didn't impact every team, but there were some teams that had to be in quarantine for a period of time. But it was
Okay. Mary, do you have any questions?
No, to be honest, I just don't see any. I don't know. I know that, like April was saying, there have been other sport teams that have been playing all along. You know, and sometimes I don't know if there's really any difference in that we're mixing kids on buses technically, where, I mean, the kids are mixing within the community. So I don't know that it's, I think that at least in this situation with the sports, that there being more, there's more guidance or there's more monitoring within it, you know, I don't know. I don't, it's a tough situation.
Yes, it is. But there is plenty of monitoring going on.
Right.
Does that mean that something might not happen? I can't guarantee that. But I'm telling you, we are monitoring this as best as we can, and so are all the other schools.
Right.
And all of us are praying that this goes well. Could there be an issue? Absolutely. But we're all going to try real hard to make this happen.
Right. I mean, and look, I mean, even the, you know, the national sports are playing. So it's hard to tell our kids we need to shut them down, you know?
True, but most Division Two and Three schools aren't playing. It's only Division One and professional athletes across the country that are playing right now.
But most of the high schools in Massachusetts are playing.
Right.
And most of the high schools in Rhode Island are playing. And most of the high schools in Connecticut and New Hampshire are playing. So
And the younger, the young kids, I mean, my nephews are playing, you know, they're just elementary school. So I don't know.
No, my kid's been playing club hockey and soccer all year. And, you know, I think there was one issue all year. So it's, you know, it's just, you never know, but you try and do the best you can for the students. And if it gets to be in a position where it's unsafe, you shut it down. But at least we shut it down. COVID shut it down, not school committee, not principal, not superintendent. It's going to be very apparent if we have to shut it down. It's going to be a no-brainer, and everyone's going to know why. It's not going to be one group that shut it down or one administrator. It's going to be apparent. And hopefully, it isn't. Hopefully, it doesn't happen. And hopefully, we keep it all year because the spirit in the school, we haven't seen since February. The kids are just excited, excited to see something brought back. So much has been taken away from these kids. There's so much uncertainty as to, can we have graduation? Can we not have graduates? Can we have a prom? Can we not have prom? Are we going to have spring sports? You know, so much has been taken away from these kids. And they are just, the meetings were awesome. They were just so appreciative of just trying to start it, rolling the ball out, seeing what happens. But, you know, it's, like I said, it's day-to-day. There's no guarantee we finish the season. There's no guarantee we go past tomorrow. But we're just going to do what's in the best interest of students, but also make sure it's safe. And Ed has restructured his hours to make sure he is there, the trainer is there, the coach is there during any time there's practices. They're all there. I popped in the other day. I was really impressed with what was going on. It's, you know, we're going to do the best we can.
Mike, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that up until this point, I was really impressed with how we were handling things. I thought we were doing a really good job of separating cohorts and going above and beyond and being very careful. And I was just, I'm just really disappointed that it's come to this. And again, the intentions are great. Yeah, the kids have lost everything, believe me. You know, my son's class that graduated last year, they lost so much. And I know, I get it. It's terrible, you know? But, you know, when we're trying to put safety first, and we need to mean it, all of this, all of this with the sports is going to undermine all of that. And it's tough to say one thing and then do another, and then have credibility.
Scott, when you talk about, you know, it could be shut down at any time. So what happens if the high school, for some reason, terrible reason, has to go all remote?
Well, if it's not safe to be in school, I told the coaches, whether it be today with a snow day, there's no practices or games. If we go full remote, there's no practices or games while we're remote. So they understand that. We've said that from the beginning to both the coaches and players. They understand if it gets to that point, the season is on pause. And if it's not safe to come back, then it's shut down. But that, again, that's kind of beyond us because, you know, we're going to, you know, there's a situation, you have to shut down the school. So
Right. I just, I'm really torn. I do see the value. I see what you're trying to do. It's just over the last few weeks, things have just really disintegrated. You know, the COVID situation has gotten worse, not better. So I guess, so my question I have is how will we know as the school committee? So no, we're not approving it or disapproving it. But how will we know how it's going? How, what can we do to, you know, stay in the loop? You know, I for one, and I'm sure the others would agree, I'd like to know what the status is.
Sure. So I think the first thing is, we'd love to have you watching the games on WCTV. You can certainly see how things are going that way and hopefully gain a greater appreciation for what we're trying to do. I think the other thing is, Ed and I would be more than happy, I feel like I'm at most meetings anyway, more than happy to come back and report to you how things are going, you know, how many kids have entered the corner, whatever it is that you would like to know. We'd be more than glad to be transparent and let you know how it's going. I think that would be, that would be great.
I mean, I think it is frustrating. And, you know, Mike's point about not having had a conversation. So I did consider having a meeting, a kind of a special meeting just about sports in the middle of our meetings because the timing, because of the budget. That's why this conversation was put off for a month now. You know, it's been a month since we had a regular meeting, a regular school committee meeting.
Even though it was happening till I saw it on a Facebook post.
Well, like I said, I was considering having a special meeting, but there was no vote required. And so for that reason, I didn't have an emergency school committee meeting. That's why this discussion is happening tonight.
Yep.
So I mean, I just think it's important going forward that, you know, we're just kept in the loop. You know, if sports are going to go forward, that, you know, we just want to know what the status is. And probably not every two weeks probably isn't enough. So we'll have to work out some other way.
Sure.
Okay. All right. April has another comment in there. As long as new protocols are being strictly followed and precautions taken, masked, and even rule changes as a parent to an athlete, he has been counting down to be hopefully able to play again. Okay. Well, thank you for sharing. Does anyone else have anything else to add?
I would just make the request for the board of health to weigh in the way they're supposed to according to MIA guidelines.
I will ask them once again. Okay.
Thanks.
And you could share that with us when that happens.
I will.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me move on to the monthly financial report.
Hi, everybody. In your packet, you received the November monthly report. Sound like a broken record. The first column is your budget, the payments that have been made to date, any outstanding purchase orders, the ending balance, and then the percent remaining. As of right now, nothing is jumping out at me that is overly concerning at all. You know, going into the winter months, I'm going to keep a real close eye on the utility lines. And unless you have any questions, you know, I intend to bring the transfer to you sometime in the near future, end of January, maybe beginning of February. Does anyone have any questions?
We'll go around, Kevin?
No.
Mike?
No, thank you.
Mary?
No, also.
April has no questions. So no, I don't have any questions. So no, I don't have any questions either, I'll just thank you for bringing this monthly report.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the fiscal year 22 vote of the budget.
Okay, so in your packet, you also received a budget timeline, so I'm just going to review that. So we had the budget workshop in in November, early November, and it presented was thirty-three million, five fifty-six, nine seventy-three. And then on November nineteenth, we had the budget presentation, draft budget. And that was through three, five, five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Then, the the, another budget overview was, that was presented. We reduced the request of staff, which was five hundred and twenty thousand. We, we, we had a reduction of staff supplies and materials of two hundred and fifty thousand. Then we looked at district monies that could be applied, we looked, we looked at circuit breaker, seven hundred thousand. Special education stabilization fund, a hundred thousand, and COVID funds of two hundred thousand. So that budget was presented at thirty-one million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Then the open hearing, which was just two weeks ago. We looked at additional budget reductions, special education placeholders of two hundred thousand. And some more supplies and substitutes at eighty, eighteen thousand, nine hundred. So the draft budget that was presented on December third was thirty-one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, and seventy-three dollars. Then tonight. We're presenting. An additional fifty thousand dollars in cuts with supplies and materials. And additional two hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker funds. And looking at the town funds that we, that was mentioned at the last meeting of six hundred thousand dollars. So we're asking you tonight to vote on a budget of thirty million, seven oh three, and seventy-three dollars. So the 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 overview of all the district funds that are being applied is nine hundred thousand in circuit breaker. A hundred thousand in special education. Stabilization fund, two hundred thousand in COVID funds, and anticipated town funds of six hundred thousand. Which the proposed district funds is one point eight million dollars. So that will bring the deficit to just over one point two million, one million, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-three dollars, I believe. So we're asking you tonight to vote. The net amount of twenty-eight million, six fifty-two, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, non-net of two million, fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Bringing the total. Proposed budget proposal to thirty million, seven hundred and three dollars and seventy-three cents. And also in your packet, you've got the deep line, line item detail. If you have any questions or. Happy to answer.
Okay, so we'll do the same, we'll go around, Kevin.
I'm just wondering what, so what is that actual budget increase then?
Just over four percent, Kevin.
Thank you.
Four point one four.
Mike?
Is this just for questions and stuff?
Yes.
Yeah. I I'm, I'm really torn with the, with the, with the not adding the teacher at mine it. And I wonder if there's any way we could do that. Anyway.
I think, I, I guess the suggestion I would have would be if, once you pass this budget, or if you don't pass the budget. Regardless, then you go, we go back and we look at what we have in there, we still have to make a one point two million dollar cut to get to. The approximate number that we believe the town will require us, so there's still a lot of movement that's going to occur.
Right.
So we can revisit it.
And 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 the COVID money, now this was the money that we had voted, you know, to use this year. Right?
Yes.
And and you were concerned that we were working that PPE and and. You you had some real, real concerns about that, but it turned out we still have it, right?
Well, what's happened is the town has stepped up and has allowed us to make some purchases through the COVID money at the town, so we've not had to. Make those purchases, what we have had to do is to use a lot of our reserve funds. To earmark some purchases if we aren't funded through the town money. We've not touched this two hundred thousand dollars yet.
Um, right, and so, so Joyce, with with this vote, would we be authorized in the use of that two hundred thousand?
You're muted, Joyce.
Joyce, you're muted now.
Yes, I believe we would. If I'm, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but this money was to be used between this school year and next school year. Is this the same money that we're speaking of, right?
Right.
Yes.
And we had talked about that, we'll have to have that vote. Rescinded. And would have to revote this money. So we would be asked, we would need to revote to rescind two hundred thousand dollars of the vote from last year.
Okay, so so basically, we're going to do our usual three votes tonight, we're going to do the not, net, non-net in in total.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, so then I'll make a motion to approve the net FY twenty-two budget. For twenty-eight million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Okay, I'll take a second for discussion, but then we'll let Mary and April.
Ask any questions they might have.
Yeah, sorry, so go ahead if someone wants a second, Mike's motion.
Well, I'm usually the one not doing it.
I'll, I'll second it, but with the caveat that because of, again, conflict of interest, there's a procedure that I have to follow when we vote, before we vote, that's all.
Right, okay. Um, so April is saying no questions, when did the additional two hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker come in?
Uh, we're, we're hoping that this year that we were going to be able to shift some costs around, so we won't have to use as much as the anticipated circuit breaker this year that we thought we were going to use.
Right. Oh, sorry, the no was to the November, so she's saying, so even if we vote this, the town is still expecting further cuts? That's a question.
Yes, well, we were anticipating getting six hundred thousand dollars from the town. So if we do get that and we use these other revenues, there's still a shortfall of just over one point two million dollars.
That's all.
That's all.
What's one point two million dollars, my friend, right?
Yeah, right, exactly, we'll figure it out.
Mary?
No, just wondering how the heck we would. Meet that. You know, having to do further cuts, I I don't see how we would be able to do that, never mind this. Uh, but I do have a question about circuit breaker, why is it, and I apologize, my dog isn't happy either. What, why is it with with circuit breaker that we. Are going to have to. Use as much as we expected?
We're, we're anticipating being able to shift some costs. And 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 not have to use as much as the circuit breaker that we anticipated.
So just to clarify, we were thinking we were going to use some of the circuit breaker money for something other than special ed, is that?
No, absolutely not, it has to be used for special ed.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Well, because there's other places that in the budget that we hope then to be able to see, recognize some savings this year. And shift those, shift, bring a transfer to you to shift those costs to the LEA of special education. And not having to use the circuit breaker to pay the tuition, tuition or and some other special education costs.
Like, so can I get examples, I, I mean, this is where I get, it always gets vague to me.
If you look at substitute lines.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I said yes.
Yeah, substitute lines, there's money that was in there this year for subs. We're finding that we're not using subs to the degree with the money that we have. So what we know is, it's quite likely that we'll be able to transfer some of that money from the substitute lines over to. Collaborative or private, and use that instead, and save circuit breaker. For next year as we anticipate that next year is going to be very difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I I don't have any questions, but. I would, you know, I would just say, like Mary said, you know, what would we do after that, that is the reason why. This, this is the number that we're voting on tonight. Because we've, we've cut as much as we possibly can out, out of the budget. You know, out of our original budget, so. Um, April. April has another question, is there concern with the need for subs as COVID numbers rise?
No, not right now, and the reason why is that we have limited the number of people coming into the building as substitutes. And so we've put in place permanent intermittent subs, and we've been able to cover at that point.
Great, is there anything else before we vote? Mike, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm fine, well, not really, but, you know, I'm. For now.
All right, so Kevin. Correct me if I'm wrong, you can vote on the non-net portion of the budget, but not the net portion, is that true?
So what I researched was that, once the board identifies the budget line item that includes my family's salary and votes on that separately. Then I can vote on the overall budget number.
Yeah, that's right.
Or I could just abstain from the vote as well, but. That's up to you, I guess.
Do we, I don't have that line item separated.
I don't have it separated either, but maybe it's, maybe it's a good idea, Kevin, to do what you said, you just vote on the non-net.
And then the total.
And then the total, because your, your family salaries would be in the net portion.
Yeah, and and that's what Dr. Sylvia used to do all the time.
Okay.
I just want to dot my i's and cross my t's on this, that's all.
Right.
Because I don't have that broken out.
Okay.
Tonight.
I guess we would just ask you to withdraw your second, then, because you won't be voting, Mike made a motion to approve the net portion of the budget. So we just ask you to withdraw your second.
Okay, which I do.
Okay, so then I would ask for another second for Mike's motion to approve the net amount of twenty-eight million, six fifty-two, six twenty-three. So April seconds that. And we'll have a roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
April? Yes, Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Thank you.
And myself is yes, so four zero one. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve the non-net portion of the budget with, which is two million, fifty thousand dollars, four hundred. Four, fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second? April seconds. Roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And April, yes, myself, yes, so it's five zero zero. And then I'll ask for a motion to approve the total number. Thirty, seven hundred and three dollars, seven hundred and three thousand, seventy-three dollars.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
April says yes, and myself is yes, so passes five zero zero.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
And thank you to the Budget Subcommittee too, for all your work, everybody.
We still have work to do.
You say I don't.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so we're almost there, we have just a few more things, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, I would recommend that you accept the following gifts, fifty-dollar Visa gift card donated by Jeff Horrell. Two hundred dollar staple card donated by Mr. Harry Wells III, Mr. Harry Wells IV, and Mr. Harry Wells V for student materials. Six hundred dollars donated by anonymous donor to be used at the principal's discretion for the Wareham Middle School. And two thousand dollars donated by Dr. Shaver Hood, it'd be five dollars, five hundred dollars per building. And this would be given for the use of students. At the discretion of the principals, and I would just like to say that I'm very grateful to the committee for voting. That two thousand dollar stipend for my job at the business manager last year. However, I felt it was in the spirit of Wareham to give it back to our students. So I would ask you for acceptance of these gifts.
So moved.
Seconded and appreciated.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Mike?
Yes, with pleasure.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
April says yes, and myself is yes.
Yeah, very much.
And I would ask you to please approve the bill and payroll warrants as listed in the newsletter.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, April? Yes, Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to the report of the school committee, elementary school update, there really isn't. Much of an update, so we'll just save that for next time in an interesting time, and we'll move on to the policy on COVID-related issues. Um, so this one, we've looked at this policy before. Kevin very graciously took it on and did some edits to it, so does anyone have any questions about the edits that were made? Kevin, do you want to talk a little bit about what what you did?
Basically, I, I. One verb that we already have approved, it's back to school plans. But I took out the remaining specific policies, because many of them, we don't have as policies right now. And within the text of what we can approve, it it gives the latitude to the superintendent to make decisions in the moment. That would affect a wide range of policies anyway, so I didn't feel we had to have those listed based on the text in that existing first page, I think it's the next to last paragraph.
Okay.
Excellent job.
So you just, you deleted items, you didn't add anything?
Nothing was added, no, other than a verb change, everything else is, it basically comes down to that one paragraph, in second to last paragraph.
Okay, okay. All right, does anyone have any questions, or Mike?
No.
Okay, Mary?
No.
Um, April? Okay, no questions, all right, well, thank you, Kevin, for taking that on. Okay, no questions. All right. Well, thank you, Kevin, for taking that on.
No problem.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve it, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
April seconds.
Oh, okay. All those in favor, uh, Mary?
Yes.
April says yes. Mike?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So it's five zero zero. All right. Does anyone have any other business? Okay, good, because it's ten thirty. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. All, all those in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
April? Yes, Mary?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Have a really great holiday, everyone. Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Bye bye.